Good morning. Welcome to our January Committee of the Whole and happy new year to each and every one. Happy and healthy and prosperous and productive new year to all. We are going to get started this morning with our consent calendar.
Motion to a present.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion or any corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. The next item is the appearance of visitors and we have no visitors signed up. So we're starting this year off great. That must mean that we've done something right for the last week. So, alright, good things. This is an indication of a good year, a great year to come. Alright, the next item is our instruction portion and I will turn that over to Ms. Goodwin-Cowall.
First on the agenda is 3.01. 3.01 standardized test scores and correlation to grades.
I think the aliens have you, Michelle. I think you're on the space shuttle.
Presenter is Dr. Jason.
McCleary.
She can't do Jason.
Yeah, thank you Ms. Goodwin-Cowall. The presentation this morning is actually a two-part presentation. It is in both its parts, a response to some questions that Mrs. Doolin asked. And then we also expanded upon those because those questions, I think, required, one, a little more background information for us to provide for you all for your consideration and probably a little bit more response than just simply asking, answering the questions as they were asked. So again, we divided this in two portions. Dr. McCleary is going to respond basically to one question and that is, does this performance on standardized tests correlate with student grades? You will have in your board information, you have all the questions that Ms. Doolin asked and we've responded to all of them. But this sort of sets the background and kind of the answer to that is no, but it takes a lot more to answer it than simply to say no. You have to, I think, kind of understand how the tests were constructed, how they're administered and what inferences can be drawn from them so that we can all better understand why that answer is no. To a degree, I think the EOCs may correlate a little bit with student grades, but the greater scope of testing does not. And there's several takeaways I think are important for all of us to have in this and we've listed those. They'll go over them in both Dr. McCleary's presentation and then the presentation that follows that will be led by Mr. McCoy. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McCleary and let him give us all kind of a background lesson in the testing environment, how the tests come into being, a little bit about the standards on which they are based, how they're administered and then how they can be best interpreted. Dr. McCleary?
Thank you, sir. Well, good morning, everyone. As Dr. Royster said, I'm going to give you background information whereas Mr. McCoy is going to directly answer most of the questions, but this is important to understand and lead into Mr. McCoy's presentation. And one answer that Mr. Webb uses quite a bit is, it depends. And so I'll take that answer and I might use that quite a bit because when we're talking about correlates to grades and standardized test scores, it really does depend. A lot of times, you might see that there is no correlation. As Dr. Royster said, with EOC scores, there's some accountability pressures there, both on the student and the teacher on their side, and so you can see greater correlation because that test score for EOC counts 20% of the final grade for the student and it's also part of state accountability, district, school accountability for the teacher. So psychometrics is a very specialized field and I am not a psychometrician. I do understand and use and have been trained in some of their theories and some of their methodologies like test item response theory, but there's a lot more to it and it's very specialized. I'm going to go over some of the methods they use when creating a standardized test like SC Ready. Similar methods can be used all across the state whether, and the nation, whether we're talking about criterion reference tests for Iowa or for SC Ready. But typically, test development begins with some statute or policy. In our case, it's the Education Accountability Act of South Carolina from 2008. It's also 2014 Act 200. The big, EAA actually guided the state to use state standards in developing state assessments and end-of-year assessments. Many states don't have state standards. Independent districts within the state set their standards and so you can see wide variations. That's one of the difficulties in trying to compare a criterion reference test in South Carolina with any other state because a state can be divided, their standards can be divided across districts because districts can have the authority to create their own standards. In 2014, Act 200 created what many called a unicorn assessment. Unicorn assessment, as you can imagine, is a unique assessment which tries to do everything and in testing, one of the pitfalls is test vendors and those using the test, often they don't understand the underlying assumptions used and the methodologies that create the test to get the outcomes that you see. And I'll show you what that looks like a little bit, just in standard setting. So there's a lot that goes into standard setting practices and many of the terminal processes and those methodologies I include here, but in addition to those, there's test development regarding individual item formats, the test type, or the test item types like selected response, text-dependent analysis, short answer. There's item development for specific content areas, for specific grade levels. There's content categories, there's difficulty, item difficulty, cognitive and language demands and reporting, depth of knowledge, reporting, response distractors, bias, fairness, sensitivity considerations, all used in developing standardized testing. In addition, there's pilot testing of items and then there's operational analysis of those items once the items are tested. There's also evaluation of administrative protocols. There's somewhat of timing, even though SC Ready, for example, in the EOCs, student has all day to complete the assessment. Many times, items are tested for time. There's test administration, training, timelines, material distributions and returns, scoring, like interator reliability reporting, responses read by reader reporting and various technical characteristics that have to be previewed and reported and defined as well within specifications that the state usually puts on the vendor. So there's a lot that goes into it and I'm only going to be discussing how cut scores are created. In South Carolina, like many states, per ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, which came from No Child Left Behind and ESSA, all states had to define college and career readiness. For us, that category which defines college and career readiness is meets expectation. And so in our law, we also define these categories for third through eighth grade, as an example, across four categories. Does not meet, approaches, meets and exceeds expectations. And for South Carolina, meets expectations is our college and career ready mark. So a student who meets, this is the definition via South Carolina, a student who meets expectations and the knowledge and skills tested and defined by the grade level, so third grade, and the content standard math, is prepared for the next grade level and is on track for college and career readiness. So there's no independent alignment or reporting to determine what college or what career. So that point's somewhat nebulous. It is, you've mastered the standards and the skills and knowledge in order to be ready for the next grade level. But I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. So again, through creating cut scores, they have a process that's defined as a bookmark method. I'll try to explain this simply, but let's say this is third grade math. So every one of these pages is considered a test item. So you'd have one third grade test item on a page. They would rank order these test items from easiest to most difficult and a series of expert, their expert panel of teachers across the state, instructional specialists within the content area, the vendor, test development specialist, based on policy and strict methodologies used. So they would, these raters would go through each of these items and then they would bookmark, each one of them independently would bookmark the does not meet where the approaches, for South Carolina, where approaches begins. Then they would continue through independently and then put another bookmark where they believed it became, of course, more difficult and where meets begins. And so that's the college and career readiness. And then they'd finally do the same thing, put another bookmark where exceeds expectations begins. And so there's a series of rounds in which they would go through independently, they would come back, they would discuss, they would see where they're at, they would talk about why they chose to use the cut scores, where they use them, try to come to some consensus. And again, these are content area experts in math or ELA. And they would go through this process until all of them were at least comfortable with where the standard was set. And so that's how simply they use a bookmark method to create cut scores. And again, it's typically based on some standard of policy. Now with that, a result might be something like this. This is just an example. This is an actual data. But let's say this is third through eighth grade mathematics. You might have a series of peaks and valleys. And so this isn't good, it's not a good test quality because it looks naturally as though sixth grade students, once they progress from fifth grade to sixth grade, has a drop. Well, that could be an artificial drop just by the way the items laid out and the experts said, well, this is where we're going to cut exceeds expectations for sixth grade. And so then, after the standard setting process, they go back and in South Carolina, they used what's called a vertical moderation method. In vertical moderation, again, they get a meta-panel of experts within the subject area and it's somewhat subjective and they use their judgment to decide, how can we smooth those peaks and valleys to get a smooth line across all grade levels within that subject area? That way, across time, students, at least visually, look like they have the same proportions across grade levels. In order to do this, just a little backdrop for vertical moderation, they use policy standards to say, is it our policy that, or statute, that requires tests or knowledge and skills to become more difficult over time, over years, or within a certain content area? If so, that might be reflected in that smoothing process. They also look at the legal defensibility of what they're doing and how they set that smooth, smooth line. They also have to generate what's called generation of assets. It's just the documentation that leads to defensibility for what they did. And lastly, they want to make sure that it leads to efficiencies of resources so that they don't, this is the old classical test item theory, so that they don't have many false positives or positive, false positives or true, or false negatives. So again, they might take a series of peaks and valleys and those peaks and valleys could consist in any grade level. Might have a peak in third grade, a valley in fourth grade. But they try to smooth then, so that's what that smoothing line looks like. And so in this example, they might smooth down fourth and fifth grade while creating a proportion greater to smooth upward sixth grade. They also look at previous history. So if you look at, in 2015, in South Carolina, we used ACT Aspire. So across, at that time, we broke out English reading and writing. Now we have just one score and that's ELA. Now, it breaks it down, but for accountability purposes, it's just ELA. And so if you look at English and reading, that somewhat increases over time. Writing after, and this was again, 2015, writing, after sixth grade declines. So everything being equal with the proportions laid out here, it's a somewhat already a smooth line if you look at all three of those taken together. However, when you look at mathematics, you can see that at least the one year we used ACT Aspire, it looks as though students do less well from third grade to eighth grade. So that's a decline in achievement, what looks like a decline. So they're doing less well. So in addition to policy, if they look at history when creating these cut scores, you'll see what that means for South Carolina. So in 2016, South Carolina set the cut scores for both ELA and mathematics. This is the result. These are the actual data after the smoothing and the vertical moderation process. So as you can see, in ELA, that impact was a fairly smooth, proportionally smooth line across third through eighth grade. What you can also see is that college and career readiness, where it turns from red to green, that line, blue is not meets, red is approaches and then the green is meets. So it, college and career readiness, third through eighth grade was set at about 55% of students, that proportion, falling in the does not meet or approaches category. So that's where that rigor comes in. If this percentage proportion was a percentile, then you would expect 55% of students to not meet expectations. So it would be set at the 55th percentile, that mark. If you look at the math impact, you see something very different. So across the smoothing process, what you see is not a natural increase in test scores, but a natural decrease in test scores just by the way they set the cut scores from third grade to eighth grade. Now, this is across the state. So you can see in fourth grade, that meets expectation set at 45% of students not meeting expectation, but by eighth grade, the percentage of students or proportion of students not meeting expectation increases quite dramatically to the 70, over the 75th percentile. So that's fairly significant. Now, someone not knowing this would say, well, students do less well across time. If they had, and this was a question I posed to the EOC and the vendor at the time, what is to say that, you know, you've just created a reflection in mathematics to show that students achieve, that students' achievement naturally declines over time when it might just be a signature or what you call a fingerprint of the test? They weren't concerned with this because they said they want to infuse rigor, but that rigor is unlike what we see in ELA as far as where they set those cut scores. And so what we see, the phenomenon in South Carolina at least, in grades three through eight, is this natural decline based on where they set the proportions of students does not meet or below that meets category in South Carolina. So this is what it looks like across time. I didn't use 2016 because for most every test, whether it's norm referenced or criterion referenced, and SC Ready's both, that's the unicorn I was talking about. Every test, there's a bump in the proportion of students meeting that mark during the second year. A lot of times, it's teachers getting acclimated to the test, students getting acclimated to the test. And so there's usually a bump in achievement. And so looking at 2017 to 2022, the latest year, in ELA for the state, you can see across the state, over that time, the state has increased achievement across the board. However, that flat smoothing line is still there. And again, one reason is, you're not going to see whether it's criterion referenced or norm referenced. You're not going to see a lot of variation when you have a big pool of students because a good test doesn't vary. It's structured and designed, even criterion reference tests, to differentiate students from that very first cut score of meets and does not meet. And you can see for Greenville County schools on the right, we also increased over the time. You can see that our scores, because we have a smaller population, doesn't necessarily follow that superimposed smooth line there. So our students go up and forth, stay about the same, drop just a little in fifth, and then six, seventh drop and then come back up in the eighth grade. So there's more variability. We have a smaller number of students and generally, you see that. But again, while I showed you how those test scores, the cut scores were set in 2016, you can still see that today in 2022. For the state, you still see that decline and it's still a significant decline from 51% to 30%. This is to be expected because of the way the cut scores were set in 2016. And you can see the same, while we sort of break that trend, if you look at third, fourth and fifth, it's not as a significant decline, but it does decline over all of those grade levels. So again, you can see that footprint design and there's not a lot of variation once those cut scores are set. Another way of looking at this, because with an end-of-year test, it's an autopsy test, all the learning has already occurred. It's not formative in nature, so teachers aren't, and students aren't getting feedback so that they can change instruction. And again, the standards that are tested, the teachers don't know which ones they are and so they could, it could come from any of the standards. But nonetheless, we look at other ways to identify just the design of this test. And so in this case, I show you reading and mathematics from MAP and that meets expectation. If you think about it this way, MAP measures student achievement for students across the nation, I think over a million students, by this yardstick using percentiles. They can take students' scores in South Carolina used from SC Ready yardstick and equate those so that we can determine what those cut scores mean if they were normed using MAP. So if these students who took SC Ready, if they also took MAP, they would have to fall in ELA somewhere between the 71st and 64th percentile. And so the sum of this, this first table shows that you have to score above average to meet expectation in South Carolina. So average isn't enough to meet expectation. So college and career ready, if it's by policy, we want it to be rigorous and above average, it is. Looking at mathematics, you can see two things. Again, it moves far above average, so the rigor, the college career readiness, if the policy declination, or the policy determination was to have a rigorous mark, then it meets that because by the eighth grade, in order to be meets expectations, you have to be at the 70th percentile or above. But you also see in those percentiles, that natural, again, that natural fingerprint of the test design where from third grade at the 53rd percentile to eighth grade, there's a decline, what looks to be a decline in achievement when really it's the rigor of the test design that created that visual. So that's how cut scores are set. That's how they were set and the impact it has on South Carolina. Some takeaways for you is how and where that initial baseline was set in 2016 typically sets that design throughout the life and the course of an assessment unless they go back and they reassess, they re-smooth, they look at different test items, item differentiation, those sorts of things, because you're not going to see a whole lot of variability, even with a criterion reference test. And that is policy and test development methods. Typically, they create a test that doesn't have a lot of variability in the outcomes. And like I said, average achievement's not sufficient to meet expectations in South Carolina because above average achievement is needed to meet expectations. And while meets expectations is considered college and career ready in South Carolina, there's no assessments for SC Ready, no alignment, no reports that tell us which college or which careers they'll be ready for. It's more based on a status of scoring so that you'll be prepared for the next grade level. And also, the design and use of standardized testing, like your end-of-year test for SC Ready in the EOCs, typically vary greatly from what teachers create in their classroom and how they assess on-unit assessments, quizzes, performances and projects. So the second question this leads into is why grades may or may not correlate to standardized test results. And this is sort of where I said, Mr. Webb's answer typically would be a good answer to use here and that is, it really depends. Recall that SC Ready is an assessment where students don't get a grade for it, really no accountability for them, but there is accountability for the teachers, the schools, the district and the state. Also, there's vastly different methods it could be, that are used for grades. Grades are typically based on very specific skills and knowledge that can be obtained from student performances, projects, team projects, independent projects, oral-written reports, quizzes, homework, classwork, whereas end-of-year tests are very stringent based on uniform, discrete items, tested across ELA or mathematics that can be easily scored and are inexpensive. Grades are based in part within an environment where collaboration, talking, asking questions, using references, devices, manipulatives may be valued, whereas you don't, you don't use those type of things on end-of-year tests. They're conducted in a very strict, quiet and what we'd call a vacuum or sterile standardized environment because the usage and the design's different from a teacher-made test. Also, time is a factor when we're looking at correlations. The time that a student has in learning, mastering a concept for a single unit in third grade math is very short compared to having to spiral that information, learn it, relearn it or refresh at the end of the year to perhaps see it on an end-of-year test. And we know that memory and retention fades over time. Exposure is another factor we look at to determine whether there's correlation or not between standardized not between standardized testing and grades. Course grades often integrate and reflect learner in a much broader contextual profile where we're interested in also incorporating interpersonal skills, leadership, collaboration, other skills and knowledge. End of year tests are completely unconcerned about any of those other factors. They simply seek achievement on a strict set of items that cover a narrow definition of knowledge and problem solving. Grades typically reflect and align the teacher covered content within the unit, whereas end of year scores reflect level of exposure to or depth across a sample of the full span and depth subject standards. Also, there can be differences, and there are differences, in grading policies, practices, and philosophies. I mentioned just a little bit, the grading of or the scoring of test scores, which is vastly different than grading of unit tests, quizzes, projects. So minimum grades, flooring, independent teachers curving, setting of grade ranges, partial scoring, extra credit, makeup work, homework, all of these things affects grades, whereas on end of year and of course, assessment, standardized assessment, you won't see any of these. So standardized testing is very uniform, again, follows stringent protocol. There's also instructional variability you have to account for across thousands of teachers in South Carolina and hundreds of math English teachers in Greenville County. They have varied experience and skill in lesson planning, design, understanding, application of curricular standards, varied instructional and assessment alignment and skill in creating assessments. So if a teacher's test, for example, from a unit is less standards based than another teacher at another school, then you can see some of that variability over time. And there's also varying conditions, and Mr. McCoy may talk more about this, but varying conditions and factors that also can balance or counterbalance correlates. And that's an individual student's stress on that one day they have a test. The stress, the hunger, the tiredness may not be as big a factor across a school year, but on an end of course test, on one day when they take that third grade math test, if they have sickness, a behavioral problem, something that happened before they even got on the bus that day, or extremely, have extreme anxiety, unmotivated, or various other reasons could cause them not to perform well on that one time test. The takeaway here is that teaching the South Carolina standards to the depth tested on SC ready is difficult. The depth of knowledge goes just beyond rote memory. And for teachers, oftentimes, they could cover the breadth of standards. The issue is the depth of knowledge and having the students being able to master, all the students being able to master to the depth of knowledge to where it's tested on the state tests. And you can see all the variabilities that occur too across these factors. So many factors influence the strength or weakness of a relationship between course grades and test scores. All things being equal, still, one of the best educational predictors, especially of end of first year college, is taking rigorous high school coursework and performing well, having a high GPA in those rigorous courses. And so I wanted to leave that with you, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. McCleary. Are there any questions? Ms. Middleton.
Thank you for that. That was really interesting. I know, having been a teacher in the past, high school science teacher, one of the struggles that I felt I had was the general feeling that the teachers are specifically teaching to the standardized test. And then sometimes if you have low motivated students, they don't care about it because it's not a grade, so then the teacher gets diminished or I guess not considered a good teacher because all the kids, some of the kids are not doing well in the standardized test. And I guess my question is, is that something that is still true? That teachers feel that they're teaching to a test so that they can, you know, feel good about, in comparison to other teachers?
Right.
You want to have all your kids do well, so looks good on the teacher? Or is it, and how valuable is it, I guess?
No, I think what you said is appropriate. There's a concern nationwide and has been since No Child Left Behind in 2001 really came on the scene that packed a punch using accountability assessments, standardized tests. That's when that feeling of teaching to the test really took off because really for the first time, standardized tests were, they were required across the nation for accountability, state accountability, along with the race to the top and all of those policy and money attachment efforts. Here's what I would say to that. There are circumstances where standards and the scope of teaching can be narrowed to the test. And I think teachers can feel pressure to narrow their teaching to the test. However, some teaching to the test must occur because, and criterion referenced arena, our tests, our end of year tests are based on state standards. So if you're teaching to the test, you should be teaching those state standards. I guess where that balance gets offset is are you, are you strictly teaching to the standards at a lower level to cover the material? Or do you seek to teach it to that depth of knowledge and mastery, which means you're using a lot of different techniques? The throughput, the actual teaching, the strategies to teach is going to look different. The classroom's going to look different if you're teaching for mastery and depth of knowledge because you have to incorporate a lot of different strategies in teaching. But I would say it would be healthy to teach to the test in South Carolina since the end of year test is based on the standards. The rub and the balance occurs though with strategies infused in teaching. If it's rote teaching, minimal strategies, not going outside of the very prescriptive standards, I think that's going to be unhealthy. But still, also to your second point, I still think teachers, many teachers who are tested for accountability, they feel that pressure. And the pressure's real because, you know, schools' test scores are out there for the public to see. And so if you are one of those tested teachers, you naturally have that, would have that feeling.
Thank you. Ms. LaVent as well.
Thank you. Ms. Goodwin-Collin. Dr. McCleary, are we setting our children up for failure by implementing all of these standards that they must meet and some don't? Are we setting them up for failure as they progress? And you said something that resonated, the states set their standards. Has our state set so many standards that it's just incredibly difficult to cover them all during the year for these teachers? I think teachers are under so much stress with all the state standards and teaching, and they hear from parents, you're teaching the test, you're not teaching critical thinking, you're not doing this, you're not doing that. All you care about are test scores. We're driven by this. I mean, I was at a meeting yesterday and I listened to this legislature talk about state standards and vouchers and this and that, and we're going to be giving more to charters and private and tax. Well, that sounds great. Charters, and I know charters because I was chairman of Greenville Tech charter, they're very successful, but they don't have all the state standards that they have to meet. They regulate their own. Private schools, they don't have all of these state standards. So why is it that they exceed and we have all these standards that we have to meet and so many of our students fall a little below the line as far as exceeds and so forth? How do we fix this? Because we're always rated so low throughout the nation, and it's because I think we just inundate ourselves with all these high standards and all of the, and so many of them, that teachers are overwhelmed. And I don't know, I get frustrated every time I listen to people talk about, well, Greenville County schools, y'all just, you know, private school and charter is the way to go because they flourish and they do, they're very successful. And I said, well, so are Greenville County students. I'm a product, my children are, everybody in my family is, and we've done pretty well. But what, but I look at the national rating and so forth, and I look at the frustration on teachers' faces when, when they have all these requirements in an elementary school that they have to write all of their objectives and everything that they're going to accomplish in a kindergarten class where the students can't even really read all that stuff, but they're required to put that on the board. And I'm sitting there going, why do we do this to these teachers? Why don't we allow them to teach instead of mandate what they're going to do every day? They've got to do this, this, and this, and this, this, and this, and takes away from their days, instructional time. So I just get very frustrated. So help me understand this.
Well, a couple of things I can say to that is, the United States historically, and it's not just a Greenville or South Carolina problem, but the United States has done a good job implementing what people call a mile wide inch deep curriculum. That is, we have the philosophy where we want our students to know a little bit about a lot. And that comes through in our policies for the number of course credits required, the number of standards within the content areas they have to learn. Whereas if you look at other industrialized countries, their scope in high school is, goes deeper. For example, in the mathematics, it may go much deeper and potentially broader compared to the United States. So we have a bit of a different philosophy, and that also comes out within TMS and PISA reporting. So that's, that's one issue. And in addition, folks don't realize, but if you look at Title 59, which has, it's a state statute regarding education, and if you talk with Julie, every year there are more restrictions, more regulations, more to do, and oftentimes that directly impacts the classroom. And rarely do you ever see any law or policy repealed that takes it away, but every year we add on. And that may take, anything that we add to teachers' time takes, that is not direct instruction, assessment, planning, takes away from their ability to do those things. And when we have so many standards and indicators, which we have to teach so deeply in an area and across many areas in elementary school for a teacher, because they're self-contained, you know, when teachers teaching all of these subjects, it becomes very difficult. In addition, classrooms that, where you may have students, of course, at different ability levels and different achievement levels, it does, it becomes a challenge. And I would say that's more of a challenge just with our philosophy in the United States than perhaps other, other countries.
Dr. McCleary, if you could change three things in our state when it comes to standards, what would you, what would you change?
Well, I don't know that I could answer that, that question.
But you're the brains behind this operation. You're the go-to person. You're the one that really gets in the depth of this. Give me one, one thing you would change.
Dr. Royster, if you give me one, I'll give her one.
I want, I want someone.
I might give you more than three.
Well, give me three, Dr. Royster.
The first would be, don't test standards that aren't taught. In other words, don't have, if you can only teach 25 standards, if a good teacher with an average class, with an average number of students in it, if they can teach 25 standards to the depth they need to be taught, then don't have 30 standards in that grade level.
Okay, that's one thing.
All right, so that's one. Secondly, test those that are taught. There's nothing wrong, people talk about teaching to the test. We don't want teachers to test students on items they haven't taught. We'd get all kinds of complaints from parents if all of a sudden an algebra teacher over here at Greenville High starts testing students on concepts in algebra they've never taught. And rightfully so. We should get complaints about that. The other thing is, where is the connection, I don't remember what slide it's on. We assert that these are, that you need to know these things to be ready for college or career, and there is absolutely no connection between the standards and the mastery of those standards and success in college and career. There's none, to my knowledge, is there, Jason?
No, sir.
In other words, they didn't go find a group of graduates and look back and see what they scored on the test at every grade level and have some measure of success. Now, I don't know what that measure of success might be, gainfully employed maybe, I don't know what it is. There is no, so much of this is theoretical. Now, we do know, because we teach culminating courses and we send students onto college or to technical training, culminating courses, we know what skills you need to have to do well in those courses. Those would be the things that need to be taught and need to be tested. This is just this theoretical construct of this is how we're going to judge people. That's one of the reasons we push so hard, our students, we want them to have college credit or industry certification. That's not a predictor. There's no prediction to that. They can show you their college credit, they can show you their certification, they can prove they can do the work associated with that certification, they prove, they have proved they can do college level work based on their transcript. So there, there are just a lot of things wrong with that. Now, the flip side is, you know, I started a long time ago. There were no standardized tests when I start, when I first started in teaching. A lot of school districts would use some sort of national norm reference to, Jason mentioned, I think you mentioned Iowa at the outset, Iowa test, some of you remember taking that in school.
Metropolitan.
CTBS, California Test of Basic Skills, Iowa test, there were maybe three or four.
Metropolitan.
Metropolitan. So a lot of really good school districts, they would administer those national tests about every other year. You may remember taking them. You can take it every year, took it like in maybe the third grade, the fifth grade, the seventh grade, the ninth grade, maybe the 11th grade. So you had an idea of compared to other students throughout the country, how well were your students doing? Just an idea of that. Because again, there's no, going back to what several of you've already noted and what Jason mentioned, what's the motivation for a student to do well on standardized tests? In our standardized testing system, the statewide system, the only motivation would be for those students at the high school level who want to do well in that course, the EOC courses, because that counts 20% of their grade. So they have a stake in it. Now, some students, you're going to put something in front of them, they're going to do well because they're motivated to do well. They have some sort of intrinsic motivation, they're just going to do well. Whatever you ask them to do, whether they get a grade on it, they don't get a grade on it, but that's not necessarily most people. So for this to be, all this, you hear all these things about high stakes testing, for this to be high stakes, the person that has supposedly is deriving the benefit from this ultimately, supposedly, is the student, and they have no stake in it until they get to high school. Other than whatever their teacher, their principal, their parents might, could convince them to, you need to do well on this. And I think our folks do a good job, our families do a good job, our, our schools do. And I think our, our folks do a good job, our families do a good job, our, our schools do a good job with, you know, motivating people to do well on those tests. But to what end? We're better judged by how many we get out the other end of the system and how well-prepared they are for their next step. But we spend, now Jason says these tests are inexpensive. Well, they're constructed in a way to make them less expensive than other kinds of tests. I don't, I don't know how many tens of millions of dollars the state spends every year. So thi- this significant money in, in a system that doesn't always get the kind of funding that it ought to have. But, but you have to have some sort of accountability. We don't need to go back to the days when I started where you had no accountability. There were no standards. The, the textbook was the only thing, and every teacher used their individual judgment. Well, that didn't result in a, that didn't result in good outcomes either. So like so many things, the pendulum swings way too far when it swings. There needs to be a structured system. There need to be standards. There need to be some means by which to measure those standards. But that ought to have some accountability for everybody involved in the process. And, and that would be a better system. But this system has become a self-fulfilling prophecy as well. When you design a system where somebody that's average can't be considered to be acceptable, that's really what all that said, isn't it, Jason? You can't be average and get above the mark for meets or exceeds. And, you know, there are a lot of things wrong about a normal distribution curve, but one thing that's not wrong with it, it's, it's, it's generally kind of accurate for almost anything that's related to talent, ability. Some of you are further up on that, some of us are further up on that in the artistic area, some, some in the physical arena, some in the academic arena, some within specific things in the academic arena. But it's generally applicable to things that are skills, traits, or abilities. And, and when you skewed a test where you're expecting that there's going to be this many people on this side of the normal distribution curve instead of this many, that's a, from its onset, a problematic design.
That's why I say we're setting them up, we're setting our students up for failure. And I'm not an advocate for that at all. I'm not an advocate that we set all our students up for achievement either, but we need balance. And I think so, by having so many state standards, we need to minimize these things so that we can actually teach in the classroom. And Jason, I appreciate, Dr. McClery, I appreciate all that you do and all that you bring to the table because I value your opinion on, on this area.
Thank you.
So thank you, and Dr. Royster, thank you on your top three. I, I look forward to hearing the top 20. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moseley as well. Ms. Mosley.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin-Cowell. Okay, so Dr. Royster, I just wanted to give a big amen after what you just said. This is a question, when you said, your second thing on that list was, test those that are taught. I have had this explained to me more than once, but I don't know that every single board member understands this, or anybody else in the general public understands this. Why, I had a child, as you all know, who has a disability. He was off standard diploma track. However, he was required to take EOC exams in classes he either never sat in or he, his curriculum was modified so much that there, there was no correlation between what he learned in that class to the actual EOC. And so he graduated from our district in 2020, and I'm sure somewhere in the myriad of test scores sits Ryan's test score for a biology EOC that he had really no business taking. So I'm assuming this is a practice across the state, and I'm just trying to get someone to explain that out loud to me one more time. So I don't know whether that's a Jeff question, or a Tracy question, or a Dr. McClery question, or a Dr. Royster question.
First, I would, I would slightly rephrase it. It's, it's malpractice is what it is.
True.
But it, but it still, to your point, it still continues. You, you could add into there the significant multi-language learners that we have coming into the system. They now get a reprieve for one year.
Yeah.
Right. But they could still be scoring, you know, they're scored on a, a scale system as to their, their difficulty with, with the, with the language. We could still have those that are in the, the, the most significantly impacted by their language, and they got to take it. So we have special needs students who, to your point, not, not in the class, not exposed to it. There's no reason for them to be taking it. And then we also have this other group. They get, well, I said they get a little one-year reprieve, but still, that, they don't need to be tested. They're, I, I guess some of that is this idea that, that we would move people into those categories to avoid them being tested on purpose. Well, well, that's wrong. Well, we're not going to, we want students to, we want students to be where they can be most challenged. So that might be at a place where there's a little difficulty for them, but we want them to be there, not at a place where they would be the least challenged. But I think that's this, this rule to try to keep you from moving people into categories where they would not be tested, for, for whatever reason. I don't make any sense to me.
Well, the opposite could also could be true, because there is a train of thought in the special needs world, since I live there, that it prevents district educators from wanting to allow their children to be mainstreamed into a general ed setting because they are going to be tested, which would have a negative impact on the bottom line, let's face it. And yet, my son spent many hours of his educational career in general education and got as much out of it as he could at his level. In my opinion, it was time well spent. But I still need someone to explain to me why, not just Ryan, but many students, we have 11,000-ish students on IEPs, and all of that doesn't all mean the same ability level.
Many, many of whom would not.
Would not fall in that category.
Exactly.
But we have many students, and I know many, that have had to take these standardized tests that the, in someone's infinite wisdom at the state level has decided is appropriate, and I would just like to understand that, what, why that is required. And then part two of that question, because I understand that we're also, we're talking about, we have federal standards and we have state standards. Again, I always hear about whoever these people are that create these tests. I don't know who these people are. I'm assuming it's experts of, that have educational background. Just, do school districts like Greenville County, do we ever have a seat at the table or representation in that process when standards are written, rewritten? Or to just say, what you just said out loud, how ridiculous some of this stuff is and why we can't make a significant change that might translate better.
To, to answer, kind of going backwards.
That's a lot of questions. It's all related.
Start, we'll start with your last question and working kind of back up to the first one. Yes, we do have, have people that are selected from time to time to be part of developing the standards. I don't know about the test questions.
Over time, we have.
But not necessarily every year. Probably every time they redo the standards, we, we probably have somebody, and they're more likely to have somebody in there. But the upside is, all right, then you got somebody in there that's teaching those courses. The downside is, their view is their course. And all of us, and we want people to believe everything they do is important. So you have to deal a little bit with, all right, you brought all these people together that teach third-grade math. Well, I think our kids ought to get this, and they ought to get this, and they ought to get this. But they're not necessarily looking at the time constraint of teaching them all of that. So you got to have kind of a broad perspective in there. But we do, on occasion, have people have a seat at the table. They tend to be classroom teachers, and on occasion, an instructional specialist. And that would be true throughout the state. But there are also, and I believe Jason, there, it may be contained within your presentation, there was a lot of information in there. There are also going to be psychometricians on the test score.
That's right.
Side, psychometricians involved in that, probably some statisticians. Who else?
Besides, they'll have policy legislator representation, although very slim, they could be in there. They'll have State Department representatives, not only from the content areas, but also from policy, the policy side and the accountability side. The EOC is the body that's tasked with managing the process.
That's the test side of it, but the State Department manages the standards.
That's correct.
Side of it. So they're running the what's taught, the EOC is running the what's tested. And I believe sometimes they also have vendors, vendor representatives.
Every time.
In the test design process, which we don't procure any other thing that way, I don't believe, do we? Jeff Knotts is not in here, but if, if we were to include a vendor in any, any of our procurement processes, that would exclude that vendor from then being selected for that process. In other words, we might, if we had some, something really specialized we were looking for, and there was some vendor that had expertise in that area, we might include that vendor from an analysis standpoint or to help us with. But if we did, we would exclude them from being considered for receiving the contract. So that, that, that's problematic. Working your way back to the testing question, I think the federal requirement, Jason, is you, you can, you can hold back 5% of your population as not, up to 5% is not tested.
1%, of the most severe alternative assessments.
That's the state, isn't it, though? What's the Fed?
That comes from IDEA and the federal government through accountability.
It, so it's 1%?
5% is, 95% must be tested, or you get like demerits, consequences for accountability.
So theoretically, we could hold out 5%, but our state will not allow us to do that. I mean, you got some that just don't show up, so.
Anything, even about a school-by-school case, a student who tests 94% of their students, say for EOC, if they're an excellent, then because they, just simply for the fact they tested 94%, that excellent report card rating will be moved to good. So you, you have that consequence.
But the 1% would prohibit us from, say, individually looking at our population and deciding, hey, well, really about 3% of them don't need to be tested. We can't do that.
Right. That 1% on the extreme case, for example, would be students at the Washington Center. And we say, oh, we're not going to test anyone who's, you know, has a severe disability, cognitive disability. So if we did that, we, we would have consequences for testing over 1%. Or for not testing over 1%.
Jason, do you want to speak further to that?
Excuse me, without objection, I need to, we have 15 minutes.
I just wanted to go back, Ms. Moseley, to the part, I think where you were talking about the, taking the class and taking the, the end of course. I can't explain the why, because it is, it is out of our hands. But you may recall that when it initially came out from the State Department, and we had the ability to have students on employability or some other track, right? We always knew that was an option. They just didn't get a diploma, right? So the initial memos from the State Department said that all kids must take the class because all kids must have access. So that happened across South Carolina. The kids were put into Biology 1 because they were going to now have to take this test. I don't know what Greenville did at that time. I wasn't in this district, but I can tell you right now, at this time, we, of course, do not do that. We do have them take the test, and we do ask, as the special education teachers do, to the, what's appropriate, the best ability. And some kids are, whether they go out into gen ed to Biology 1, or whether they stay in a special education class, they'll still take the test. So there's no reason to not think a child can't go and be mainstreamed for the portion, you know, for what's appropriate. It, and I, I look to my left, my colleague here at Wade, when he was principal at Wade Hampton, called me repeatedly concerned about students being upset, which you know, we, none of us think it is appropriate at all. But I, I do want you to know that we don't put them in the class. You know, I mean, as, that it would not ever be. The IEP team would make that decision appropriate for each child, regardless of that test score and how we're going to take a hit from it. Does that help?
Well, it helps. I understand that you guys don't think it's appropriate. I would just like to think, I, I would like to meet the person that does. I mean, that, that's just where I am. Okay, quick question on EOC. During, during COVID post, first of all, one year we didn't have EOC, 2020. But then it went to the next year, they only made it count 10% of the final grade. Is it back up to 20? I'm just curious, because I know, is back up to 20?
Districts had the leeway to count zero to 20%.
So is it 20 this year in our district, 20% of the grade? Okay. I had to know that, because I didn't.
Just said the leeway was for that one year, that 2020 year, that was the leeway.
Well, 2020, they didn't have EOCs. Last year, I think my child counted 10%.
Yeah, whichever year that was, we had leeway that one year, but it is back to state mandate.
It's back to state mandatory, okay. I just wanted, I had not heard that, so that's good to know. And then second, this kind of ties into what we were just talking about. So we have, at the high school level, we have, I don't think we level at the elementary school anywhere. Like, kids are all grouped together.
They, they'll pull them out and work with them by level, but to your point, in, in a class, they're mixed together.
And then in middle school, I think there might be some leveling that starts, and then, but in high school, it's very clear. You have CP classes, you have honors classes, you have AP classes, and depending on your level. So I have children that have taken the same class at two different levels. And it is very clear the difference in rigor between a higher-level class and a lower-level class for the same subject. So what I'm, I guess where I'm, if I'm understanding Dr. McClery's, whatever slide it was, where it said, in the state of South Carolina, well, and to your, your point, it's, it's not, you can't be average, which a lot of our, I would say, CP, students who are taking CP classes, that's kind of probably where they fall on the bell curve. You can't, you can't be average and meet expectations per the definition of our testing system or whatever. So we have a whole lot of kids that fall in that part of the bell curve, including one of mine. So are we, when you have teachers that are teaching different rigor, because of student, you know, where they fall in that curve, are we basically going into these standards and these, and these testing scenarios where we really don't expect this population of students to do well? Because I, I guess I've heard that from a lot of teachers, that they teach their heart out, but at the end of the day, they can't stand the tests the kids are given. They think they're terrible. They don't think they test them. They think they're poorly written. And in many cases, they've said they're just asking them to do something that's developmentally not appropriate for a large percentage. You know, you've got this one, you know, this percentage of the bell curve that's very high achieving that you could argue differently for, but the vast majority are not there. So I guess I'm just trying to understand. I just feel like we can't ever break this cycle when, when, when we're, when we have, you know.
There's probably a fair number of those standards that wouldn't be developmentally appropriate for the average student in a grade or a course. Some number of them.
So going into testing, since we level at the high school, for example.
When you get to the depth of the question.
Right.
Not, not the breadth. The breadth's probably, okay.
Right, it is.
When you get to the depth of the question. Jeff?
Well, I was going to say, I think, you know, when we, we, and we spend our, that's what we do, is we analyze test scores and we're down to the student level. And I think all principals would say, too, you've got some kids sometime, we have students, obviously, even with IEPs, because that's the whole point of an IEP, is to try to, you know, get them to grade level standard, that perform at met standard, even though they have an IEP. That's to help them get to that. We have CP-level students in elementary, of course, we don't really have CP honors, but in elementary, we would have your normal average CP students who do score, okay, on exemplary, on the SC Ready Test. So it, it's a continuum, I would say. Now, the lowest of the students, I would certainly say the, the developmentally part, especially in the younger grades, developmentally, we do see students that sometimes are not developmentally, developmentally ready for the depth of standards of what it's asking the students to do on the test. You, those who have been around. the students to do on the test. Those who have been around a long time know that previous, about five years ago, four years ago, when the state tests changed, it used to be more 70, 80% of the state tests was depth of knowledge one, or a very kind of basic recall of information. And then when the tests changed, it went to 70, 80% DOK two and three. And Dr. Stiles will remember this, because all the principals panicked, because our test scores went down 20, 30, 40 points that next year, because of the rigor that those tests raised to. So what we've seen is that it's just, it's a makeup, I don't disagree with you, but we've seen a big continuum of students that, you know, aren't, I wouldn't say there's a group of students that can't meet standards necessarily. Certainly, there's some that have some severe disabilities that are going to struggle to meet standards. But our average Gen Ed student, they may not meet standard the first year, or the second year, or the third year, but there's many times that we see those students after multiple years of intervention, multiple years of, you know, teachers working with them, that maybe they take in the sixth grade, but they finally meet standard in sixth grade as a MET standard. But I've always, and I think this is where you're going, but Ms. Mosley, but I've always agreed that we in education, in testing grades, we don't take in developmentally where a child is developmentally. And just because a child is behind developmentally in third grade, and doesn't exactly fall into what we think a third grade child should be, you know, doesn't mean they're not going to catch up later and be back on grade level. It just takes them a little bit more time, and that's okay. Just like some people take six years to finish college, and some people take four years to finish college, and doesn't mean one's more successful than the other in their careers, just because they took longer to finish college.
All right. Well, I obviously talk about this all day, so, but I'll, I'm good for now. Thank you. I'm good for now. I have a lot of opinion about it.
And to your last question, could you ask about us sharing this? We share it frequently, and it's been shared with the state superintendent, it's been shared with the EOC, been shared with our legislators. So we've shared these concerns, as have school districts and administrations throughout the state of South Carolina, and school boards, for probably years now. I can remember sitting in a room in the 90s, sharing concerns about how accountability was being solely rested on the shoulders of standardized test scores. So unfortunately, in many cases, us falling on deaf ears. But a better indicator is, are our students graduating, and do they have the skills to be successful as they move on? And that's what we're going to focus on. But we have to focus on these test scores, because unfortunately, that's how everybody's judging the local school, the school district, the state of, the state of South Carolina, and public education in general.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Ms. Doolin?
Thank you so much for this presentation and putting all this together. Y'all got to a lot of my questions, so glad for that. But when, when the standardized tests are created, like SE Ready, are they designed in a perfect scenario to have a perfect bell curve of results?
Oh, no. Act 200 was, it was sort of an odd legislation piece, because it defined what a test would do for South Carolina. And again, I go back to a unicorn. A single test can't do everything. But Act 200 said that our test would do everything. And when you write that kind of design, then what you get is a test that doesn't really do anything well. And so criteria in reference, while this is, SE Ready, for example, is a criterion reference test. So theoretically, there should be variability based on teaching to influence, somewhat, to influence student outcomes. But because it's also set to norm reference, norm reference standards, it's a mix. But you definitely do not see norm reference or a bell curve in the outcomes. As a matter of fact, sometimes you see bipolar distributions or skewed distributions. And in our case, in mathematics, you see a lot of skewness towards not meets and approaches.
Well, when the tests are created, do they give what they think an average student would score? Do they think an average student would...I'm just confused about where they think students should score on these.
It really comes down to policy at the time, and philosophy of the state, the legislators, and what the EOC is using to influence where they set the cut scores, because mathematics plays a role in all of this. But at the end of the day, the outcome is going to be set based on policy. And the policy of the day, the new term, was college and career ready. And so if in your, if in someone's mind, when developing the test, they want it to be college-ready, the discussion along the time was, this has to be a rigorous test, because we want every student, if you recall back in that time, we want every student to be ready for college and to go to college. There was a definite push, that if you didn't go to college, then something's wrong with public education. Everyone should go to college, which isn't, isn't the case. But that was the philosophy at the time, when this test was designed, to make a rigorous assessment where meets expectation is college and career ready. What that definition turned into is, college and career ready is set where a large proportion of students falls below that expectation.
But from what you're saying, that doesn't necessarily correlate with the grades?
It can. There's a lot that has to go into that. That's why, it depends. In general, it won't necessarily sit, because there is no motivating factor for a student necessarily to do well. Of course, at the younger grades, students want to perform for their teacher. As they get older, that incentive and motivation drops. There's no grade, there's no incentive for a student to perform well or not. If a student just wants to blow it off, they can. And it has no effect whatsoever on them independently. Whereas EOC is a bit different. And that's why we see differences in that correlation between grades. And we see a higher correlation between grades and test scores, where there's accountability.
So, for example, like, I'm looking at Slide 15. So when you look at this, you would say roughly 40% of kids in eighth grade meet or exceed. So could you, if you look at the grades of these exact students, would roughly 40% have As, Bs, and Cs?
No.
In their class?
Probably not.
Fewer, or a lot more, or?
Well, you're probably, more having As, Bs, and Cs. And those are some of the correlates I mentioned here. The whole design of classroom assessment, the length of time between learning and testing, the types of mastery exams, whether it's quizzes, projects, that varies greatly from a very sterile standardized test. And so while a student may perform well in the class, and you can, you know, a good example are the extremes. Students taking, say, AP Physics, they may be doing well in the classroom. They saw a lot of indicators. Some may be the teaching style, how the information's chunked, what they get to do to perform well in the class. Quizzes account so much, that students may be well in quizzes, they may be able to use notes. But once they get to that AP assessment, it's a very sterile, standardized assessment, very discreet items, based on certain standards to be tested, and they may not do well. They may not, they may get a one on that assessment. So you see those kinds of things quite a bit. So answer is, really, it depends. But there's no guarantee for a correlation across the board for all of these reasons. And so I think, and Mr. McCoy, I know is going to speak to this.
Excuse me. Let's extend for another 15 minutes.
Mr. McCoy is going to speak to this, but a push, and it has been for some time now, with that three-pronged planning, instruction, assessment approach to the classroom, having instructional leaders, instructional coaches, and others observe classrooms. He'll talk about instructional rounds, he'll talk about, you know, in business, it's called the gimbal walk. It's where you go in the field, it's where you see the line, the production line, and what's happening. In classroom, in schools, it's a classroom. So you go in there, and you, you see, and the administration with teachers, they look for calibration. So we know the standards, standards are the, I forget what we're calling it, he can tell me, but the focus of the day for that standard is posted, students know what they're doing, they know why they're doing it. And so is the instruction and the standard of the strategies appropriate for that standard? And is their teaching, does it go to the depth of knowledge? The teacher can do a great job, but the students may not be learning. And so part of that observation, instructional rounds, and classroom observations, looks at, okay, what are students doing? Because if teachers are doing great, and students aren't understanding the concepts, then that's a problem. So a lot of our focus, and then the school administrators' focus, is to get in the classrooms and define, determine what's happening, what students are doing, learning, knowing, and doing, and calibrating that to the standards. And so that's how you get higher correlation to test scores. That's just one part. There's a lot to it. And one thing I say is that, when we talk about testing, we're taught, you know, all of this goes back to what I think is the most complex phenomenon that we can imagine, human cognition, the way people think and feel. It's just extraordinarily complex, and we want to funnel that down into good, bad, meets, does not meet. And it's just so that we, as humans, can understand, and try to understand, and make some assumptions off of human cognition, which is, again, extremely complex. So that's what we get. We lose a lot when we do that, but I guess it's the best method, as where we are today, that we have.
Well, I know that y'all have been advocating for changes, and maybe some waivers for certain students, like Ms. Mosley mentioned, would be beneficial. But what else can we do, if no one is listening? Well, there is a new superintendent.
I believe Ms. Bush provided you the answer to that question.
The new superintendent starts, what, last week or this week, I think? So tomorrow?
And...
So maybe a fresh set of ears would make a difference.
Well, I had the opportunity to share with her last week, some, not all of these concerns, because there wouldn't have been that much time. Some of these same concerns that we've discussed with you all today. And she seemed receptive to those things.
So do you think that if, that the advocacy committee could take a fresh, take a fresh punch at this, and...
I wouldn't speak for the sales committee, but I think that would certainly be an appropriate place for that to go, so.
Julie and I have already had an under the table conversation this morning about this, so we'll work on putting something together. But understand that the new superintendent came from the EOC. So the set of red tape is not going away. We'll have to work around that.
It might be helpful, too, for us to provide, and Jason certainly can do this when we did it last time, what the federal requirements are under ESA, because there are, there are requirements that the state superintendent, or even our legislature, does not have the ability to waive. And so the part of that ESA, Every Student Succeeds Act, there's some pretty stringent, what grades have to be tested, how they have to be tested. I mean, there's some pretty stringent things. So we could provide that for you, if you're going to discuss that, just so we're not wasting time, you know, at a state level, discussing something that really, federal is going to say you can't do it anyway, under federal law.
And that may be a place where we have done less communication over the years, is at the federal level, because to Jeff's point, all this originates with the federal government. It started with No Child Left Behind, and then that morphed into Every Student Succeeds Act. But it goes back to mid 90s. Now, we've had standardized testing and standards in our state since Basic Skills Assessment Act in 82, 83, somewhere along in there. But that was a very, also a pretty good system. It was the basic skills that you needed to have, mastered, to go from one grade to the next grade, and they were sequential. And there was a book about that thing, and it contained all of them. Here's what you need to know. You may remember that, Dr. Stiles. But a pretty good system, and it tested. If you taught those things, that's what it tested. So you knew reasonably up through the eighth grade, what, that a student either did or did not have a sufficient number of those skills, to generally be successful in the next grade. So it was kind of a stair step thing. But it was a much more simplified system. And the only testing at a high school was a high school exit exam, which was kind of a general knowledge thing, and they eliminated that, and replaced it with end of course, which that is actually probably a better system than the old exit exam was.
And if I could add one more point from the advocacy point of view, one of the challenges we've got, and we'll have to do some research to see who's there now versus back when some of these decisions were made, is our legislature is not exactly enthusiastic when it comes to having them admit that they did not do something correctly. They very rarely will go back and change something that they have established, because it comes across as, we didn't know what we were doing to begin with, Act 388 being a prime example. So we'll need to deal with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doolin. We have Dr. Ann Presley that is on the Zoom, and she has a question.
Good morning. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank y'all for accommodating me this morning via Zoom. I will be back in regular board meetings at the end of the month. Where's the guy? Where's the guy? I've been listening to this, to this conversation this morning, and thinking, the term that has come into my mind over and over and over again, is we are serving to masters. On one hand, we say constantly that we want our students to be able to think at higher levels, be able to perform at higher levels, all students could be able to. And on the other hand, the way that we test them, and the level that we test them, the EOC. And y'all, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go there, because I think I probably still have some sausage on me some days from working at the sausage factory for the past seven years. So I'll just go ahead and start with the test item development and vetting process at South Carolina Department of Education. And the standard, and the office assessment is terrifying at that. So let me describe you exactly what that looks like. They pull a very small group of people together, and they work through these items, these test items, item by item. So they've got this item bank of things that they want to vet. So you may have a couple of teachers. You may have, I know for a fact that before, and this is a blessing, we've had, we've had education associates or leaders from the district office for content area who took part in this. And this is not on them, this is on the process. So you've got the DRC, I believe, I got those letters right, for South Carolina Ready. And what they do, they come in, and the people sitting around the table go through these items, and they determine very quickly, in a matter of minutes, whether, whether an item aligns with standards, and what DOK level they are. So, and I can't remember who said that, but the comment was right, we have a vast percentage of those are DOK level two, and DOK level three. We have DOK level four, and an indicator in our body of standards. And so our poor teachers are, again, serving to masters. Do they teach to that lower DOK level, so that students can perform well on the test, right? Accountability, that reflects on them, their school, Greenville, state of South Carolina. Or do they actively pull their students into viable, higher level learning opportunities? If you've heard the term project-based learning, any of those things where standards are bundled into real-world learning opportunities, right? All of our soft skills, we're profiling South Carolina graduates. Well, guess what? That takes time to plan, time to implement, time for students to do. Meanwhile, the standards train is already chugging down the track, and they're going to be tested at the DOK level two later in the and they're going to be tested at the D O K level two later in the year primarily, maybe D O K level three. Let me mystify for everybody why the testing companies are so committed to D O K level two and D O K level three. That's because you can't test at a D O K level four on a standardized test, meaning predominantly multiple choice. So there's part of the testing conundrum for you right there. The standards development process, and I can see firsthand of this. Y'all know standards, the standards, sets of standards for content areas, those things are developed by the push and pull and will of hundreds of people. And this is set up by a process between the education oversight committee and State Department of Education. If it's core content, if it's math, D L A, science, or social studies, E O C does a full review of those standards, and they have to approve along with the state board if those standards are, are going to be approved with the state. So there's that push and pull over, over breadth and depth. We've heard that this morning. The thing that my wonder and the thing that, that bothers me and vexes me the most is how do we, and I'm, I'm so privileged to sit on the advocacy group with, with Mr. Sailors and, and others, because the way that this is going to change is not drawing a V on just the E O C, just the State Department, but it's putting pressure on our legislators making these changes. Because y'all, I'll repeat this, they're the ones calling shots. And we've got some folks that may have vested intentions, but not a clue of the nuances of what I'm describing. So my wonder, my question is, how do we really, really drill in and advocate for these changes that need to be made? To the college and career ready piece, and again, I go back to serving two masters. My wonder is, how do we continue to assuage the misgivings of our legislators and others who are absolutely opposed to anything with the term national in it? Okay? If you think back to the debacle of Common Core, Common Core standards, right? You would have had to have been not on this planet, not remember that. That was the big blow up. We don't need anything federal. We don't need anything national. We don't need anything, for our students to be competitive, we have to have some correlation. And right now, we've got South Carolina developed tests that are measuring South Carolina developed standards. And so it's very hard, we walk a tightrope. So my other wonder is, how do we, how do we correlate? How do we align ourselves nationally without blowing up the whole thing and giving people a drawn seat over we're letting the best, we're letting the best, we're letting, you know, run the show? I do want my child to be nationally competitive, period. And I think everybody else does too. So, so my, my other wonder is, how do we do that? As far as the college and career ready piece, there is no definitive process for how you call a set of standards, college and career ready. And Superintendent Royster is exactly right. And if you look across the country, each state has a different process for defining college and career readiness. That's a little scary too. We have a rough kind of percentage of college professors, people from higher ed, and also people from business and industry who weigh in either on the vetting of the standards or on the actual writing of the standards currently. But it's loose, and it's not written anywhere in like statute or anything like that. My other wonder is, should we put pressure to, hey, let's get this down in writing. Let's get something we can hang our hats on, because it's loose and hazy right now. Finally, and this, this speaks to a lot of the swirl right now around giving, giving public taxpayer dollars to private schools. And I want to be real clear about this. And our, our new superintendent, she is an advocate for that. Charter schools and private schools are not held to the same level of scrutiny as far as how they, they go about that. Charter schools receive public funding because they do follow the accountability requirements. Private schools, however, do not have to. You're right, they do not have to teach standards. They do not have to put their students through the, through the testing process, through standardized testing, which is, which begs the question, how in the world would we give our taxpayer dollars in a direction like that if
Excuse me, Dr. Presley. I need to extend the time. I have one more speaker, someone that extended for 10 minutes.
I promise you.
Okay, go ahead.
But the other, the, my question there, and we need to be very vigilant about this, and, and I want to say, I, I am a huge advocate of charter. I'm a huge advocate of private schools, if parents choose, because we're all about choice. But we need to be very clear with all of our constituents. It is not, those are not the same levels of, of accountability across public and, I mean, across charter and, and private. So I think we need to charge ourselves with making sure that, that everybody knows that, so that there are not any misconceptions with the decision-making process. My final, I guess, wonder and commitment just umbrellas all of this. Our advocacy group, we're going to have to be as, as crisp and as forceful in a nice way as we can possibly be. One of the beautiful parts about being, being in Greenville, we are large, and we do garner attention, and we do wield some, some ability to, to, to make some changes, I believe. And I think all of these things that are being brought to the table right now are, are extremely important. And I, I want us to figure out how we can, we can do that. But we also are going to have to be super, super committed to knowing where the, the decisions are being made. Who's actually driving those decisions? Is it E O C? Is it S C D? Is, or is it the, is it a combination of both? So that we know where to apply pressure and to ask all of the right questions. Thank you so much. I hope I didn't take too much of folks' time.
Someone, Dr. Presley, was there a question? I know you gave commentary, but
My question, my question is
That you needed, was there a question that you needed answered?
Well, I don't think it's answerable today. I would like to know what was asked about what would be changed. My question is, what, what are our first steps in the opinion of Superintendent Royster and Greenfield County? What, what do y'all think our steps should be as far as, as far as that?
Okay, Dr. Royster, do you want to answer that or?
I think it would be Dr.
We, we'll get it answered later.
Yeah.
We'll get it answered later, Dr. Presley. Thank you. Ms. LaBent as well.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin-Cowen. Dr. Royster, as I tried to find out who the members are currently on the education oversight committee, I'm having a difficult finding. Now, in the past, they were senators, house members, et cetera. No, not really any educators, but since they are now putting, because I know Scott was on there. Is that correct?
He, he was on there, and he, he left there last month.
Okay.
There, there are seats designated on there, and if I try to reel them off, I'll, I'll probably not get them correct. But for example, the chair of the House Education Committee, who was Representative Allison.
Right.
Dr. Turner, do you use your example? Dr. Turner was her appointee.
Right.
She, she has an appointee. The chair, Senate Education, has an appointee. The governor has an appointee. There are various appointees. There are usually one, two, three, could be four educators on there.
Now, now there are.
Now, and, and that's, over time, there have been some number of educators on there. There are also generally some business people on there. And then legislators themselves are on the E O C. I don't, I don't have a current list, but I, I know, because I actually talked to Dr. Turner yesterday, I know that he went off, I think his term actually expired more than a year ago, but he finally went off last week or week before last.
So my question is with the advocacy committee is that we work diligently to try and make leeway with the E O C, because they obviously, there, there are three steps to the state superintendent. There's the E O C, there's the South Carolina Board of Education, and then there's the superintendent. And I think the E O C probably has, they are very involved. So, Mr. Sailors, I think we need to say, times are changing. We need to move forward. We need to revisit. We need to do this. We need to do that. Can you help us? And try and get them on board to where we can work and get some things revisited, changed, or updated, and move forward. Because I feel like the new state superintendent will be willing to look and listen. And if we can work together, and she sees how important things are to us, and how we can make a difference throughout the state of South Carolina, I think she would be open. And I think she has the ears of many people in the upstate, right here in Greenville, that can work with her to help her understand the importance. It's not that we're against charters. We're not against charters. Charters were a part of Greenville County School District for years until they had the state charter. We're not against private schools because we've allowed private schools to play football and sports and fine arts center and et cetera. So we all want to work together, but we also want for the betterment of all of our children in the state of South Carolina. So with that being said, Dr. Royster and Mr. Sailors, I look forward to our advocacy committee, uh, meeting within the next two weeks. Thank you.
Chairman could I offer something from an advocacy point of view? First of all, we need to take into consideration that with every failure or every challenge in the public school system, those that would prefer to have vouchers and tax credits find those a victory for them. Another reason that the system in South Carolina is failing. That being said, and considering the makeup of the super majority of the legislature, I don't think you're going to get a whole lot of members of the legislature willing to go back and say, we're doing this wrong. Because every time they have the perception that there is a failure of public education, they use it to their advantage to get the point across that we need tax credits, vouchers, tuition, what, tuition support, whatever you need. So there is a vested interest on their side not to change things. That's the, that is in itself the largest stumbling block we're going to face. I don't care if it's Greenville County, the state of South Carolina, or anyone else that's involved in this conversation. Now, the makeup of the E O C will change a little bit because of the change in the legislature. So I would imagine next week, there will be some new names on that. But Neil Robinson, who's an attorney with Nixon Pruitt, is the current chairman. Barbara Harefield, who is a, a staff member with Charleston County, is vice chair. We have Bob Couch from Anderson Five as an educator appointee from the speaker. Replacing Scott was Russell Booker, who used to be superintendent in Spartanburg Five, Seven, excuse me. I hope he's not listening. He'll shoot me if he say, if he hears me say that. Terry Alexander is a member of the House. April Allen is a business appointee. Melanie Barton is the governor's appointee. That in itself is a problem. Okay? Ray Felder, who's on the House, is a member. Kevin Johnson from the Senate's a member. Sidney Locke, who is the governor's appointee, is a member from business. Senator Dwight Loftus is a member and has been for many years. Okay? Brian Newsom, Patty Pate, Ross Turner is a member. One shining spot there. And then, of course, prior to the new change, Ellen Weaver was the executive director, and Molly Spearman was ex officio. Ellen will move on as ex officio as state superintendent. So there will be some changes. But to be brutally honest with you, I totally agree with the concept and the consensus that we need to do something and be more aggressive in how we approach it. But it will be an uphill battle.
Well, I'll just be honest with you. I'm up for uphill battles. I've been in battles for the last six months, and I'm willing to continue that for the rest of my life. When it comes to the education of these children and to make it fair across the board, I will do whatever we need to do. And if we need to work with all these people, then we need to work with them and get something done and keep the betterment and the education of our students at the forefront. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. LaBent as well. I would like to say something, so I'm gonna increase the time just for a minute. I think that we should really advocate for them going in and redoing those standards, taking out all of the standards that the teachers cannot teach, and advocate for them to just have the required standards that our teachers can get through, because they have so many that they have to go through. And then you get to the test, and half of those standards are not on the test, but the ones that they didn't teach are on the test. So I think that we should advocate for, for decreasing those standards, those South Carolina standards, so that our kids can be better on these tests. Okay? Are there, are there any other questions now before we move on to our next subject? None? Thank you, Dr. McQuarrie. We're gonna move on to, to three point oh two, focus school process, continuous improvement model. Who is? Jeff McCoy. Dr. Ross, do you want to say anything before Jeff goes into his presentation?
Just briefly, Ms. Goodwin-Cowen, while this is the, though they're not equal in number, this is the second half answering the questions posed by Ms. Doolin, which really centered around our schools that have seventy percent rate of approaches or does not meet expectations. And that's really very few of our schools that are in that number. But we have identified those. We've included that in this. This is in its broader sense, though, a presentation about all our schools and the processes that we use to improve student attainment and student achievement. And while this started with the questions regarding performance on standardized test, the presentation, while it does address improving standardized test performance, it more generally addresses how you improve instruction and student achievement, no matter how that student achievement is measured. So not just by standardized test. And so Mr. McCoy, Ms. Bird, Ms. Lewis, and Dr. McDonald are going to talk with you all about what our processes are, what the focus school looks like, what does, if you pull that apart, what does that, what is that concept? And what are the actions that take place within that concept? And what success we have had in moving student achievement forward in schools where we have implemented the focus school process and where it's been carried out with fidelity and rigor after we have stepped out of the arena of being directly involved in that school? Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Dr. Royster. So for those of you who, we just did the board orientation. This will be a little deeper dive that we talked about earlier about the focus school process, a little deeper. For the board, remainder of the board is probably a little bit of a review, but some of the data that we have now that we've been looking at this year and a little bit the end of last year, really at our schools that we have had maybe on the focus school list for more years than originally designed model for. And so those are the schools that we really are going to focus on today. As Dr. Royster said, some of this is in response, Ms. Doolin, to your question. And so the, this first slide here that you see, this is elementary schools. And Ms. Doolin specifically asked about schools with seventy percent underperformance in specific subject areas. And so what we did here was take the last nine, from nineteen to twenty-two, so you can kind of see which schools met that threshold of the seventy percent plus. Technically, well, not technically, nobody did in two thousand and nineteen. We did put the white, scores in white for these schools in yellow. We put up there just so you could see what those scores are. They weren't under the, it's hard for me to even see those scores now, but I, I, those scores weren't under, weren't over that seventy percent threshold at that time. Y'all will recall that twenty twenty, as Ms. Mosley mentioned, we didn't really do standardized testing on that year, so we didn't have scores for that year. And then twenty twenty-one was when we were coming out of that pandemic recovery. So you see, we had schools in the white down So, you see, we had schools in the white down there, Duncan Chapel, all the way down to Armstrong, that had some 70% plus scores, not meeting or approaches. Once we hit 2022, all of those schools came back out of that in the white. They came back out of that 70% plus, except for Sue Cleveland and Science there, and should come out of that this year as well. The ones in yellow are the ones that we have had, that we, for multiple years, have been focus schools. Now, again, they didn't necessarily meet the threshold of the 70% plus years back until 2021, but those have been schools that we have identified. And you all know, we take on somewhere about fifteen to seventeen schools a year that we consider underperforming, or kind of on the line, where we want to just kind of make sure they don't fall into some sort of state designation. And so, we work with them, the assistant superintendents work from the leadership side, we work from the academic side with the teachers, instructional coaches, and principals, to help them put structures in place to be successful. And so, you can kind of see, again, we're gonna talk in elementary really about these, heavily these two schools. And then, in the middle school level, same kind of thing. You'll see prior to 2019, the schools in white, we had a few of the schools in white that had that 70% plus underperformance in '21, coming out of that more in '22. You can see those numbers decreasing. And then, of course, Woodmont had, in, back in 2019, was the only school in the white there that had over 70%, does not meet or approaches. Again, the schools in yellow, those do go a little farther back in the 70% plus range on that, and those have been our focus schools also, as you can see, for the longest, well, at least Lakeview Tanglewood for the longest time, have been our focus schools as well. So, we're gonna heavily focus on those. And then, of course, any school that's in a focus school process, those fifteen schools, the strategies that we're talking about is gonna apply too. One of Ms. Doolan's also questions was about where they, I know that's hard to see, hopefully you can see it better on your presentation, if you're following along. But that is where they are located. Ms. Doolan asked about where they were located in the county on the map, so you can kind of see where those schools, again, we are talking about the 70% plus, so that's Alexander, Cherrydale, Lakeview Tanglewood, and Berea Middle. For the most part, I believe all of those, probably minus Cherrydale, I guess, is probably would be located on the White Horse Road corridor, which is typically, as those of you that have been on the board for a long time know, that's typically where all our Title I schools, for the most part, fall. Now, that's not always Duncan Chapel's not, Slater Marietta's not, but the bulk of our Title I schools would fall along that White Horse Road corridor. We were hoping today to share with you the new state designations. As of this morning, we still do not have those. They were supposed to be due to us last Friday from the state. We don't have those yet. We've been told they will be this Friday. So, we'll see if those come back in. But just as a reminder to you all, every year, every three years, the state identifies schools that fall into one of these four designations. Jason talked about this, I believe, last month, mentioned it casually, and didn't go into a lot of depth, but mentioned it, that they were coming. They apparently are still coming. We don't have them yet. But the comprehensive CSI school, that is your most severe designation for schools that are in that category, and you can kind of see which schools, is Title I exclusive, any Title I school with an overall weighted point index at or below the fifth percentile. And then, also, one exception here is any, not just Title I, any high school that has a graduation rate of under 70% automatically becomes a CSI school. You can see priority schools, again, any school with an overall weighted index at or below the 10th percentile, so that's the any school, not Title I, that's any school can fall into that category. And then, those last two, really, the ATS I and the Target Support, those really focus more on subgroup performance. So, a school as a whole would not necessarily fall into comprehensive or priority, but for example, they may pull out and say, "Hey, your kid's in poverty, actually underperforming at such and such a level, you're gonna be on this ATS I list." Those last two is where we have the most schools. Every district's gonna have schools in that list somewhere, because every district says some school that has an underperformance in a subgroup, most likely. So, that's where we had the more of some of our schools fall. We only had one CSI school, for example, the last, again, every three years, supposed to be identified, COVID threw a little wrench in that, I think we're on year five or six now of that. They were not reidentified during COVID, so typically, it's at every three-year identification process, but we're now going on for about six years on this. For all of these, I believe, except for maybe the TSI, all of those first three categories, there is money that comes along with being designated as one of those schools. That money is supposed to be used specifically for, if you're in a subgroup underperforming, so if your special education population's identified as underperforming, then, then you have to use, you should be using that money for those kinds of strategies, whatever that happens to be, or kids in poverty. If that's your underperforming, then you should be using that money for strategies to increase your students in poverty. So, we will at some point have to send that to you, or we can update you in a future presentation, once we get those state designations, again, hopefully next week, when those come out from the state. So, one of the things we did want to talk about, that I don't think we have mentioned in the past, and again, something we just started looking at a little bit more the last, really, year, year and a half, was at these schools, again, in yellow, those schools that we're talking about specifically, those Alexander, Cherrydale, Berea, Tanglewood, and Lakeview, what are some of the challenges that come with that school? We use the same strategies, the assistant superintendents use the same strategies we use in all the schools that have been focused in the past. We've had a lot of success in our other focus schools, as you'll see at the end of the presentation. We have many of them now out of that process and are high performing. And so, really looking at, what are some of the challenges we have in these schools, why we have a little bit of a harder time moving the performance or achievement level of these schools? So, one of the first things there is the increasing, and most of you that have been on the board know this, our increasing multilingual learner population. The students, I believe, you can see up there at the top, in the right corner there, 19.75% of our population now of Greenville County Schools is multilingual learners, is coming to us, speaking another language. I believe now there's, I believe last number I heard was ninety different languages spoken in Greenville County Schools. It was sixty-five years ago. So, it's continuing to increase as we get students, and not a bad thing, from all over the country, all over the world coming to our district, is a great piece of diversity that we can learn a lot from. Obviously, those students who are coming to us that don't speak the language, to Ms. Mosley's point earlier, when you're talking about standardized test scores for students who are taking tests that have never even spoke the language until they get to us, we do get a one-year reprieve on that. The levels we've talked about before, you can see at these five schools, no, six, five schools, these five schools, you can see, the first population is the percent of school, of population in that school. So, I think this occurred two years ago, maybe for the first time, we had a school, David, you may remember specifically for Lakeview, I believe, that, two years ago, maybe was the first time they went over that 50% mark of, 50% of their population being multilingual learners. That's a big difference in a school that has 10% multilingual learners in it. And so, you can see now, we actually have with Cherrydale, with 53% of their population is multilingual learners. So, over half of their population. Now, what's really important more to look at is those columns to the right of that, there's different language levels, obviously, that you speak, for how proficient students have become in the language. Level three is really kind of where they're more functioning, they can participate in class, they can participate in conversations, they understand the English language, they're probably gonna do fine on tests, tests that they are given, even standardized tests, as long as they've had the, you know, the instruction that goes along with that, like our other students. Level four and five is more, is even higher. That's, level five, really, kids, you wouldn't even know that they didn't, they weren't necessarily native language speakers, they have a high command of the English language. But those two levels there that you see, one and two, those, it's important, if you add those two numbers together, for example, in Cherrydale, so 60% of those 53% MLs are level one and two, which means that they are very early in language acquisition of that. And so, that's very intensive, as far as, they don't, they're sitting through class of instruction, but the instruction's in English while they're learning, trying to learn the English language, they're sitting through English instruction at the same time. So, obviously, you can imagine that's a big challenge in those classrooms, where most likely, well, definitely in those schools, every classroom's gonna have a large number of ML learners in it, versus other schools where you may only have one or two students in a classroom, which is a lot easier to help from a teacher's standpoint, one or two students, than it is trying to do strategies for ten, fifteen, or more kids. So, we certainly have some strategies around that. Those last two columns, you can see, the newcomers are in, included in the number one, the level one column, those are kids who just arrived in the country. So, they've just come from another country into our school system, so they're our newcomers. And then, and by the way, the newcomers typically have had education in their previous country. So, they've had education, let's say, Spanish, from Spain, if it's Spanish, then they would have had their, they've been in school in Spain, they come over here, they just don't know the English language, but they've been in school, they've had formal education. The last column there, the slight students, you can see that down at the bottom, students with limited and/or interrupted formal education, those students are coming to us, brand new to the country, and they've had little to no formal education. That can be a fifth grader from a country in South America who's never been in school. It's common in, from our Afghani refugees, if you're a woman or you're a girl coming from Afghanistan, it's more common they have no education, because it's not valued among women in Afghanistan. And so, it's more common to have some of those coming over that have no education at all. So, again, could be a fourth grader, but technically, they've had no formal education, may not be able to read or write, and they don't speak the English language. And so, we have a higher number of those students in these schools that come to us, and you can see that. There's many of schools in our district, across our district, don't have any of those students, but these schools are gonna have a higher number of these. Some of the other challenges are teacher recruitment. I think this is something that we've all looked at, even from the assistant superintendent level, and collaboration with HR, looking to work on this for the future, but you can kind of see, the number, the categories of teachers that are up there are what we call our, really, our kind of first-years teachers. Again, not to say they're not good teachers, many of these teachers will be amazing teachers, but all of us, those of us taught, remember, our first-year teaching, all of us had a lot to learn our first-year teacher. None of us came in our first year, were amazing teachers our first year, that was a learning year. And so, these are our first-year teachers, and you go, you can kind of see, again, I'll use Tanglewood as an example, because it's the highest, but 75%, almost 76% of Tanglewood's population of teachers are first-years teachers. And I know Dr. Stiles will know this, as a former principal, working with new teachers is intensive. It's, it's, it's a lot, because they need a lot of support. Again, that's not to say they won't be amazing teachers, but there's a lot we dump into them to really get them to becoming a really high-quality and really good teacher. Those of you who know international teachers, we've employed that a lot, our international teachers are not typically first-years teachers. Typically, they have a proven track record in their country, wherever they're coming from, they just have a big, as you can imagine, they just have a big learning curve on the educational system for America. When you're coming from a, from a country like China, where education's very revered, and not necessarily for all children, if you don't do what you're supposed to do, they just throw you out. You know, that's not the case, obviously, and America doesn't need to be, but they have a big learning curve with our classroom discipline and management in our classrooms. And so, that's just some challenges there, but they're, they're very, usually, typically very good teachers, they just have some, just have some acquisition things we have to work on with them. And then, you all know our GATE teachers and others, Alternative Certification, our GATE teachers, again, for those of you who knew, that's our Alternative Certification we run in Greenville County, PACE is the state system for all that. And again, the challenge with that is any number of people who come from a career, straight from the career, straight into the classroom. So, they didn't get all the pedagogy in college, they get all the discipline, the management, all of that, they're just kind of taken from their job in the corporate world and put in the education system to start teaching. So, there's obviously a lot of support we have to dump into those as well. Again, but, again, four, three, four years later, some of those GATE teachers are some of our very best teachers, they have such an amazing perspective from the corporate world coming into our system. So, you can kind of see those percentages down there. So, again, not a bad thing, but you can understand those, again, how much we have to work and work with those new teachers to really help them be successful. And then, some challenges of student transience, for, for example, I'm gonna use Berea, that's Berea Middle there, Berea Middle, 50% of the students who started in sixth grade were still there in eighth grade. Alexander, only 29% of the students who started with us in kindergarten were actually there, still in fifth grade. That number may actually be a little lower, because what this does not account for is for the students who were there at kindergarten, they left in first and second grade, they came back in third grade, they left for fourth grade, they came back for fifth grade. It doesn't account for that, and we have students to do that, in that, particularly on the White Horse Road corridor sometimes. And so, one of the challenges, obviously, on that is every time a child unenrolls, they don't enroll the next day, usually, into the new school, a lot of times, a week passes. So, you can imagine doing that multiple times a year even, how many weeks of instruction you lose. Greenville County, Jason alluded to this, but Greenville County has a pacing guide, and we have a curriculum. So, the good thing is, for the most part, if you leave Duncan Chapel and you go to Berea Elementary, the, we're on about the same pace. They're not missing a lot of content if they unenroll here and enroll here, but if they don't, if they miss a week in that time period, then they're missing some large gaps of instruction, obviously, they've missed a week of content. So, the transient rate on our White Horse Road corridor, and particularly these schools, as you can see, is pretty high. I mean, that's a big challenge for teachers, I'm trying to figure out constantly where kids are and how to assess them. And then, finally, you can see the student attendance challenges there too, as well, for some schools up there, as you can see. On the right hand, what we did was, we just kind of listed for you schools that had excellent report cards, or good report cards, that's what the Es and the G's stand for, I should have put that key there, but the excellent and good is the Es and G's out the side, and what their attendance rates were. And obviously, every even tenth of a point of attendance represents students, so that's a, while the numbers look a little closer together, it's a lot, the numbers of students when you're talking about a 94% attendance rate versus a 91% attendance rate in there. So, you can kind of see how those correlate to the schools that we are talking about, particularly the, the bottom two there, Lakeview Tanglewood. The district rate overall is 92.7 attendance rate among our students. So, Ms. Lewis is gonna talk a little bit about some of the strategies we do use in elementary schools across the board, again, for our focus schools, but also for these schools that we're talking about.
Good morning. So, some of the strategies that we have in place at the elementary level to support our schools include our focus school process, which you're learning about on today. It is, it is a continuous improvement process that includes all members of the school staff and team to make sure that we are providing successful opportunities for our students. This year, we implemented a new curriculum in English Language Arts, the name of the curriculum is called SAVIS. It is aligned to our Greenville County Schools Literacy Framework, and it is required by the State Department of Education for those schools who appear on the PMETRIO Literacy List of Schools. In addition to the new ELA curriculum, these schools also participate in letters training, which is language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. The letters training is focused on phonological awareness, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, writing, and language. It is also required by the State Department of Education for our schools that appear on the PMETRIO Literacy List of Schools. We include before and after-school academic support programs. Those programs include instruction in ELA and in math, enhanced principal supervisor supports, which include participation in learning walks, instructional rounds, having meetings with the school-level leadership team, and a variety of different things that we just have in place to provide those supports. We utilize our benchmark assessments to identify struggling students before the end of the year, so that we are able to make the necessary changes in curriculum, whether that is reteaching, offering enrichment opportunities, and of course, retesting those students throughout the school year. And then, you are aware of our multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, and OnTrack Greenville, which allows us to look at, at the attendance, behavior, and academic performance of each of our students, and then make those necessary changes throughout the school year. The slide that you see here is, is an illustration of our GCS literacy framework. In a previous board question, we were asked to kind of talk about the different resources that we have available to ensure that we are delivering a comprehensive GCS literacy framework. So, if you look at each section, I'm just gonna look at the green, the green section just speaks of our reading workshop. It provides you with a list of available resources that schools may choose to implement ELA instruction in each one of the components of the balanced literacy. It also provides you with some detailed or specific information regarding the number of days and weeks and minutes of each day that is spent in making sure that our students are exposed through, to all components of our literacy framework.
Good morning. Very similarly, in our middle schools, we are, of course, utilizing the focus school continuous improvement process. And what that looks like in a middle school, of course, is involving the school administrative team, the school instructional support team, as well as our lead teachers. So, really working to utilize as much talent as we can possibly utilize in that school. In the fall of 2020, when Lakeview was first designated as a comprehensive support school, we used part of the state funding that was provided to us to introduce AVID, or Advancement Via Individual Determination. And that is a research-based framework for school improvement that focuses on preparing students to be college and career-ready. So, it really takes a comprehensive approach to look at, number one, how do we get our kids to be excited about school? Number two, how do we get them to come to school? And number three, how do we know that, that when we have turnover in our teachers, that we have consistent practices that can still be in place? AVID has allowed us that opportunity to really develop a lot of structures and systems and organizations within the school to create that consistency for our kids. That started at Lakeview in, in fall 2020. We have since expanded that initiative to both Tanglewood and Berea. First at Berea, we introduced in the fall, and at Tanglewood, we're now introducing with a full implementation for next year. So, these schools will undergo extensive training to, to utilize- So these schools will undergo extensive training to utilize that framework and to begin to utilize those teaching strategies to influence what they're doing in the classroom and what kinds of supports they're providing students. We also, this year, expanded the number of intervention seats at all of these schools through our three interventionists, one for language arts and one for math, and then one for wherever the greatest need is in that school. All three of these schools are utilizing that for math because our math scores are significantly lower in these three schools. We, in addition to that, have added a math intervention curriculum. It was something that we hadn't previously had before. And so this year, we're utilizing Number Worlds, which is a very consistent way for us to help kids develop some of those skills that they lacked as they transition through the years. All of our schools offer before and after school academic support programs. So they're focusing on things that kids should be working through right now in class, but also working to provide additional remediation and intervention for kids as well. Of course, those enhanced principal supervisor supports are things that I do. I am in these schools at least two to three times a month where we're doing comprehensive work, i.e. we're observing classes, we're providing feedback on activities that are happening in the school, and we're really digging deep into their data and looking at what some of those indicators may look like for success. We do that same piece with benchmark assessments, looking at the data, understanding really, how can we reteach? How can we provide additional support to kids and really help them grow? And then, of course, also, as Ms. Lewis said, utilizing our multi-tiered systems of support where we are naming it, claiming it, and then we are working to really make sure that our kids have some of those skills in place and some of those supports that they may need through our OnTrack Greenville connections and partnerships.
So as our assistant superintendents identified, some of these strategies have been going on for several years. Some of these are newer strategies. Again, we kind of look each year at the deficits, where do we feel like schools can benefit from? That's from our work, from, I mean, we have partner districts around the country, they have colleagues they have in conferences, things they attend, and learn new strategies and ideas that we bring back, because obviously, this is not something new just to Greenville. Every school district has schools that may not be performing where we want them to, and everybody has some great strategies sometimes we can bring back and apply. So how do we support, again, not just these five schools, but how do we support underperforming schools in general? And again, where they may not be performing where we think they should be, or where we may have seen a slip over a couple of years and we just don't want them to fall into a more of a danger zone, and we may intervene with that. And so what our model looks like is this tiered support model. So at the very top there is really the schools we're talking about today. Those are our focus schools, not just those five they were, we were talking about, but the focus schools in general fall in that tier one box. And so you can kind of see what we do when it comes to those schools. We have intensive intervention with that. This is superintendent working at those schools very heavily, the academics team, the academic specialists, the academic leadership team. It's a kind of an all hands on deck when it comes to working to improve the test scores there and the instruction, obviously, for students. And so we'll talk about kind of in detail some of these things, so I'm not going to hit all those bullets. But you can just see, that's our most intensive, that's where we spend a lot more of our time. The consult schools, again, those are ones that just came out of tier three. We don't want to leave them cold, they've had support, and then just to say, well, you're doing great, here you're on, you're on your own. We want to kind of step them down a little bit, and so we usually fall into tier two, and then typically, they'll fall into tier one. It also could be, though, a school that, again, we identify to say, I think they're on the verge of struggling, and we just don't want them to fall into that tier three status, and so we're going to kind of take them on as a consult school. And the goal of that is to keep them from going into tier three, almost like a state designation. We don't want them to go into a state designation. And so the goal, again, is to get them back to tier one. The tier one schools, as far as support, now the assistant superintendents are in all of their schools regularly. For the academics department, we're kind of more into schools as tier ones ask us to come do PD. It's common, we have tier one school, we'll go out and do PD, we'll work with PLCs, we'll work for teachers as they ask us to come out and do so. We are just heavily into tier two and to tier three schools. And then just for our focus school processes, a month at a glance, this might be a newer graphic for some of you, we just kind of tried to visualize it, what it looks like month at a glance, and who's involved in these focus meetings. And you can kind of see, for instructional rounds, which we'll talk about, and learning walks, every one of those folks up there are involved. Everybody from the principal supervisor, our assistant superintendents here, all the way to our academic specialists, our special education specialists, and our ML specialists involved, again, depending upon the population of the school and who needs to be there. But it's got, again, an all hands on deck to kind of identify what are some of our challenges that we need to work on. The instructional leadership meetings typically led by the assistant superintendent or the principal. Ideally, the goal is to have the principal lead those, but the assistant superintendents lead those meetings initially at the district office, the focus meeting, I'm sorry, the focus meetings, when we're all involved in. The instructional leadership team meetings are just what happens at a school. That's what the principal, the assistant principals, instructional coaches, that's what they do weekly to talk about instruction, where we're going, where is our deficits, what do we need to do? And then you can kind of see, again, we'll talk about professional development, coaching cycles, and PLC planning. That's our team, our academic specialists, instructional coaches, and school admin, really involved in what the deficits may be and how do we coach that up? How do we provide professional development, or how do we work with PLCs to do that? This is not a new graphic, so I won't spend a lot of time on this, but these are just the big components of our focus school model you can see up there. Obviously, data is a very big part of this. Jason talked about, and David and Arista talked about, the benchmarks. Those benchmarks are critical for us because we can see immediately where our students are trending towards their proficiency. As I mentioned before, those benchmarks are about 93% to 94% predictable. So basically, we know three times a year, four in the high school blocks, but three times a year, we know where our students and how many of our students are going to be proficient, and that meets and exceeds category in SC Ready. What we've seen a trend in over the last couple of years is those schools, they'll get their benchmark scores, they'll push hard, and we'll see a large increase from their benchmark score to their SC Ready scores because they've actually been able to identify what the kids don't know and how to circle back and actually reteach them because it's tied directly to our test. Our improvement team, as I've talked about, you can just kind of see on the left and right there, who's involved in the improvement team. Again, these are our focus schools of 15, 16, 18 that we take on a year, who's involved in that. And so these are just some specific titles that you can see. Again, heavy commitment from leadership, this is not a, just a school approach to say, you need to do better. This is actually a come alongside, district, help you, come alongside with instruction and help improvement. At the school level, typically, we want to see the coaches all involved and the administrators involved. Obviously, the teachers have a big role in that, but these are the folks that lead the improvement team. So the yearly instructional, this is kind of just what it looks like structurally for us and the focus school process, where you see instructional rounds and learning walks on there, and we'll talk about what those are. But typically, we shoot for three to four targeted improvement cycles per year. Now, I will say that this is, while this is a focus school structure, there's a lot of our schools, non-focus schools, that basically do this because all schools have a place to improve, right? So a lot of our schools do this, and they're not on the focus school process. This is their normal continuous improvement process. But we identify through instructional rounds and learning walks which is not working, and then we do a couple of months of intensive PD and coaching. Teachers don't, this is not one workshop that you do and then people have gotten it. Teachers need time to practice that in the classrooms. If we hear anything from teachers, it's that, that give us time to practice the one thing that we're working on so that we can become experts at it. And so that's just what our targeted improvement cycles look like in there. And then our professional learning cycles, you can kind of look, we start at the beginning of the year with a learning walk, which we'll talk about in a second here. And that's, learning walk helps us determine the problem of practice. I'll just use elementary, for example, guided reading. We may identify and say, you know, that our teachers aren't quite doing guided reading exactly the way we need to do it based on the model. And so we may identify that as a problem of practice, and then we move through, okay, how do we correct that problem of practice? And typically, that looks like professional learning, coaching cycles, and then we revisit at the end, the instructional round process to revisit to see, okay, did the professional learning and the coaching cycles work? Do we see an improvement in the coaching, in the guided reading? And so looking at these two first, the learning walk overview, as I mentioned, is a high level. You can see the roles there, the things that we do in there, but that learning walk is really just that. It's for the administrators to walk around, typically, again, at the beginning of the year. They can do it throughout the year to progress monitor, but really, at the beginning of the year, it's just kind of, we're coming back off of summer, you've got sometimes a newer staff coming in, you've got new teachers, just to kind of look and see, what does the instruction look like in our school right now? Just to kind of see, do we see any red flags? Do we see any things we need to work on as a school? A lot of times, it might be a continuation from last year, but what do we need to work on? And so this is what it looks like. It is research-based as well out there. There's several research studies on the learning walks and the impact they can have in a school when administrators are doing them, obviously. And then just, you can see kind of the steps we walk through on the learning walk. And really, the goal of that is, what are we going to work on for the next two months? What is our coaching cycle going to be around, and what is our professional learning going to be around? Some of the problems of practice that we see regularly, because you may say, what's a current, what's a, you know, typical problem of practice? While every school, that may be different to some degree, these are the most common that we see in Greenville County. And it's also, if you look at that sample list of problems of practice from University of Washington, Center of Educational Leadership, who we work with, they have, those three that we see are involved, are also included on their list, and they have several others on there. But typically, for example, student academic discourse, and really, all that is we're looking at is if we're walking in the classroom and the teacher's lecturing for 45 minutes. In other words, the kids aren't doing the work, they're sitting there passively listening, they may be getting some of the content, but they're not actually engaged actively in the content. And so they're not, the academic discourse, what we want is students talking, students disagreeing. Whoever, I think it was Ms. Lennox Wells or Ms. Mosley, mentioned, critical thinking. We want those kids, students involved in critical thinking, and so discussing and disagreeing. We just, I disagree with your opinion on this. As you can kind of see, the solution there are some of the things, the common things we would go in and work with teachers on. How to use scaffold teachers to conversation. Sometimes that's just a scary, particularly for new teachers, that's just a scary thing to have kids discussing and things, because sometimes you lose control, you can lose control of the classroom if you're a novice teacher sometimes. So that can be scary for our new teachers. So just working with them on how to put structures in place while you, so you can keep the structure in place and discipline where it needs to be, but also give your kids the opportunity to discuss and talk. Student ownership of learning, a lot of our schools do goal setting. You can see that in some of our schools. I know Northwest used to have a big wall up there they used to have for students where they could see visually their goals. Are they meeting their goals? The students would, I think, I think they still do that, Dr. McDonald, all male schools now, really, the students setting their goal. And that's, that's really where we want to be, is our students setting goals for learning and taking ownership of that learning so they can see their progress visually as well. And then the reading for comprehension is a big one. You'll see that across multiple districts across the country. It's just really that, how do we build strong professional learning communities? How do we work with teachers to make sure that our students are reading across all subjects? Biology is very different skill set for reading than math is. The vocabulary is different, we have to teach that disciplinary literacy, we have to teach that different vocabulary so students understand that in their disciplinary literacy, depending on what content area they're in. And then, so I talked about this already a little bit, but the learning walks typically are in the beginning of the year. This chart doesn't vary much from what we talked about before with the school improvement team. If you are a focus school, it's the blue, that's who's involved in the learning walks. If you're a non-focus school, all of our schools, for the most part, do learning walks. So all of our schools, if you're not a focus school, that's who typically is involved in the pink. You can see at the bottom there, not all of our schools are at the point yet of including master teachers, but that is the goal. We ultimately want teachers to go on learning walks. Teachers don't get to see others' classrooms a lot of times because they're teaching. So it's really positive, and the research would say, teachers who get to see, math teachers who get to see other math teachers teach is a, is a big professional development opportunity for them. And so we want master teachers to be part of that. Schools have to work out the structure and process first, and then move to adding teachers to that, to that. And then when you're looking at that kind of middle part, what happens? So once we identify that problem of practice, what happens in the middle? How do we make sure, how do we coach up? How do we work with our teachers to correct maybe some area of instruction school-wide that we might see? And so the, most of you may remember, five, six years ago, we had Diane Sweeney in. Diane Sweeney helped us build our coaching model. We really kind of changed our whole coaching model to this coaching cycle where if a teacher, teachers who are going, and by the way, we like all teachers in school to have had a coaching cycle at least every other year. It's not always possible to do a coaching cycle with every teacher every year. Our focus schools, we get a lot closer to that because we have more personnel in those schools. But your typical school's not going to be able to do every teacher every year, it's just not usually possible. But what that looks like is starting with the instructional coach or the academic specialist or whoever's coaching them, reviewing that lesson plan. They may have some questions, that's not a, that's not a, that's not an overview to critique the lesson plan, that's a review of the lesson plan to ask some questions, if they have any, with the teacher. They do that pre-conference, they can ask any of those questions, then they move into the observational lesson. The coach observes the lesson, they meet with the teacher afterwards, how did you think it goes? Normally, the teacher says, eh, this went well, I don't think this went very well, though. And typically, out of that, well, always out of that post-conference, we set a goal for the next meeting. So if the teacher said, and I see, said, yeah, you know, a lot of the kids, they weren't really discussing on topic. So that would be a very simple one that we could look, okay, how do we set a goal, and how do we set a structure around discussion to make sure kids are actually engaged in the topic at hand? And so that might be a goal, and then that starts all over again. So that's a six-week cycle, so that happens, that whole cycle up there that you see would happen once a week for six weeks in there. During that time period, the administrators do have a role. The administrators typically are conducting their observations during that six-week cycle. We like them to do it weekly, but definitely every other week for sure. And they're commenting specifically on that goal. So that teacher's goal is class engagement, where that goal is, that administrator has to comment directly on that goal because it's encouragement for the teacher, and it's also another set of eyes to say, for the IC and the, just kind of collaborate and say, I don't, I didn't really see that, or we need to maybe do another cycle next week on that same thing because we didn't maybe see that occurring in the classroom yet. Every goal that a teacher sets for their coaching cycle, that may not be a one-week thing, that might be multiple weeks it takes that teacher to work on that goal because, again, they have to practice it, and they have to get comfortable with it. And finally, that last one, that instructional rounds, the instructional rounds, kind of, like I said, typically comes at the end of this cycle. So we've already done the professional development, we've already done the coaching, and then the focus of the instructional rounds is, if Dr. McDonald was the principal at Northwest, Dr. McDonald would say, okay, we've been working on student discourse the last two months, really teaching our teachers how to engage students in discourse and conversation, and here's what you could see. And David would give us several things that we should see in classrooms when we walk around. We would then go and walk around and see, do we see those? A lot of our principals have commented, it's just good to have a third party do that because principals know what they've worked on. And so sometimes principals say, I think sometimes I see things I really don't see them because I've been doing and working with them for the last two months. And so that third set of eyes is valuable. So we all go, we split into teams, we do these instructional rounds, we observe about 15, 20 minutes in the classroom. And then a lot of it, you'll see down the bottom there, the goal of that is actually to ask students questions. It's not to look at the teacher, it's actually to ask the students, do you know what you're learning? What are you working on? How do you know when you've learned it? And if students can't answer those questions, then we kind of know then the clear, the teacher clarity maybe is not quite there. Teachers didn't, students didn't understand why they were learning. All of that relates back to our learning target, which is, again, helps with our goal setting. Do students know what they're trying to learn at the end of that lesson and how they're going to be assessed on that, which is critically important for them? And so at the end of those focus instructional rounds, at the end of those, we come out with a new set of goals. It could be, hey, we saw this, you guys knocked that out of the park, we saw that happening in all of your classrooms, you, we really, your teachers did a great job. And then we may move on to another one and say, but we didn't really see this, or we saw this, or maybe we maybe do a learning walk again to identify, what's the next step? Typically, out of that, there's about three, four, five next steps that come out of instructional rounds process for the principal and the team to turn around and redo that cycle again. Okay, now we're going to be working on that. Again, it's a continuous improvement model to increase our instruction expertise. And this just illustrates that same thing, again, two to three months, just that whole cycle. It's not a one and done, it's a multiple kind of year cycle. We monitor this more for the focus schools. Again, the non-focused schools are doing these as well. They may do one or two of those, or they may do three of those. It just depends on the school and where they're at in their, their comfortability with that. And just an easy way to kind of look at this differently. Learning walks, instructional rounds, and you can kind of see that, what it looks like there. Both of these really, though, are for the school to gather data. This is not to provide the teacher with feedback. We have another model for, we have another set of observations for that. This is for the school. So when we go into learning walks, when we do instructional rounds, we're visiting teachers' classrooms. We may leave a little note of encouragement for the teacher or thanks for letting us visit your classroom today. But the goal of that is not to give the teacher feedback at that point. That is just fact finding. We're just gathering where we have some issues across our school in general. So you can kind of see what the difference between a learning walk and instructional round. But both of those typically, when we gather outside of instructional rounds as a team, four of us might go and see. What we're doing then is we're writing the note together. We may write some, a couple of things we saw in the classroom, writing that note for the teacher as a group, what we saw. But we're giving that feedback as a group. Learning walks, again, is going to be more, thanks for letting us visit the classroom in that. The, all of this is based on the research-based practices. Most of, some of you have seen the Hattie's, Hattie's work. We use Hattie heavily because it's such a huge research study for education across the country, across the world, really, that they use those. I just, this, this piece here, you can kind of see, the blue is where we kind of want to be. These are where our strategies are, our highest yield strategies are in the blue. And you're going to see that in just a second. So think, keep in mind the dark blue and the light blue. Those are the two you want to keep in mind on the next couple of slides here, the dark blue and the light blue. And there's what we're going to focus on. I know you can't see this, so just put it up there as a reference. It's on the internet. We can send it to you. This is what we use. It's laminated in my office. It's laminated in the prince and many of our administrators' offices because this is what we're looking at when we're going to spend time, even after those learning walks and structural rounds, what gives us the highest yield of strategies? Our teachers use this heavily. Now, they may not have the chart, and they may not necessarily know which, which category falls under, but they know what, a lot, many of them know what strategies are high yield. So you can see it there. There's, this is two-sided, both sides here. And what we did for you today is we pulled out of those two-sided sheets, because there's a lot on there. We pulled out the highest yield strategies of those two sheets. So the ones that typically my team is going to focus on pretty heavily, that we want to look at. And so I'm not reading all these. You can look at them. But the dark blue obviously is the highest yield strategy. So when you do these things effectively, and by the way, every one of these references, you can go to the website. Every one of these actually tells you what that means and what it looks like. So for one thing up there, some of you may notice homework, I don't know where it is up there. Homework is one of the ones up there somewhere. Homework, and there's multiple slides of these. Homework, people would say, teachers might say, oh, well, great. If I give homework, my kids will do better and achieve. Well, when you look at the research, it's very specific to what you have to do with homework. If you're just giving general homework to all 30 of your kids the same, the research is going to say, it's not going to be that effective for all your kids. When you start individualizing, now I'm going to say individualizing 30 times. When you have some low, middle, high homework type things, like, and a lot of our teachers do that, then you're getting some yields, right, on that? The student who's struggling is going to struggle through 50 problems. They may not need 50 problems. Maybe five is enough for them to get through because they're struggling. It's going to take them four hours to do 50 problems. The students that already mastered it, they may not need any problems. And so looking at how you do it, so that's important. We always tell our schools, you have to, even though something we look at like homework, I use it as an example because everybody knows what homework is. But if you rush to that conclusion, say, well, if we just give our kids more homework, they'll do better, that is not the case. When you look at the research, that's not what the research says. So that website is actually great because you can actually go into the website, see the research summary and actually see, to get this effect size, this is what you have to do in there. And so there's multiple slides of this that you can look at. Again, the dark blue is the one that, is that you want to look like that's our highest yield. And then we do, but we do light blue as well. The others aren't harming children. It's just not going to be as effective on there. So if you're going to spend your time on something, spend it on the strategies that we know, if you do correctly, are going to have, be high yield for you in there. I did include, we don't have much influence over this, but I did include for you on the back of the one sheet is more about the student and the home. And it's just for our teachers to be aware. You all know this because we've talked about this before, for example, home influence. We know parent involvement and socioeconomic status is a huge impact on the student's achievement. Okay, we don't have control over that. We, we can't control that. Parents' education. We don't control any of those things, but that's on here as far as how much that actually influences a child's achievement when you have some of those home factors in there. And so, again, this is just a summary of, again, that professional learning, that continuous improvement cycle that we run two to three months. We try to keep it two months. Sometimes it spills into three months in there. But this is that cycle that we kind of look at to, to improve. So I talked through these things. Again, this is just a summary of kind of that whole process in writing. I showed it to you visually. The one thing I want to point out here that Dr. McDonald mentioned was the benchmark assessment. That's a big part of what we do. We just looked at those for high school yesterday. And that, it's, again, it's a predictability model for our schools that said this. It predicts about 94, 93% of how our kids are going to do on the state assessment. And it's by standard indicator. So we know that these kids didn't master this standard. So that's an opportunity now for our teachers to go back in remediation, to be able to work with those students on that standard so that they can master that standard that they need to know. So on the left is what we talked about today. And again, instructional rounds and learning walks, that's feedback for the school. I did want to emphasize that. You can see over here is where we have the feedback for the teacher. We're required by the state to do that. Obviously, we want to do that for teachers so they can continue to improve and get better as well. But those formal observations and the informal observations is what we give feedback to teachers on. That's where they're getting the actual feedback from administrators is on those two observations. The formal, obviously, is what's required by the state when they're under evaluation. So we have to, we're required to do that. And the informal observation is actually what we do in the county. Administrators do daily throughout the course of the year. And then finally, looking at where we're sitting with the data. You saw some of this when we did the test score workshop, but it wasn't pulled out like this for you to see. If you knew the schools, you could look at them on the big chart. But this is where our focus schools kind of land as far as the data. I want to focus on the box before the, the data before the green box initially here. The black box just shows you our initial baseline data year. That was the year, the year after the black box is when we took over them as a focus school, when they became a focus school with us, that we would work with them. And so you can kind of see where that falls. That's what the black boxes are. You can kind of see, though, leading up to 2018, 19, for the most part, where our success was, and that's what the green is representing. Not always that, for, now, first year, we usually do see gains in our focus school process, but that's everybody getting used to the process. So not always see gains in every subject matter because that's where we're, the people are learning, teachers are learning, administrators are learning. But typically after that, we see gains. So you can see that green column in 18, 19, for the most part, all but maybe one of the schools there. And that green should be, very middle there should be highlighted in green. All of those schools, for the most part, had green increases, which is what we want to see. Of course, then COVID hit. So we were on the upward trend in those schools. COVID hit, obviously, you all know this, that our kids in poverty across the country took the biggest hit during COVID. Didn't have the resource at home always, all the time. The parents, many times, had to work. They weren't at home, particularly in our poverty schools. They still had to work to make, to make a living and bring home the money for this, for the students and their families. So you can see in 2021, our data took a hit. However, again, using those processes, all of our schools, for the most part, improved again, and many of them fairly significantly, improved in 21, 22. 22, 23, we have, again, the benchmark scores looking, again, we expect that to improve again to get us back. Many of the schools did get back to where they were. You can see, again, Alexander, 21.9. We need them to increase, you know, a little bit on that, obviously, to get them back to where they were in 18, 19. But the one-year growth we put up there for you, that's just the green box from the 20. And again, you know, that's COVID. That's pandemic recovery, and that's COVID. But we also want to include in there the five-year growth. Our goal for the five-year growth, obviously, in here was to be much heavier, much larger. But of course, we had the pandemic. We didn't expect it to happen in there. But even with that, for example, when you look at Grove, even, even with that, you can see in Armstrong and some of the schools, Thomas E. Kern, even those gains are significant in five years, even having the backwards COVID, where we went backwards significantly. So our schools were increasing, they went backwards, and now they've made some tremendous gains back again. So we know the focus school process works. Same for middle school. Dr. McDonald already mentioned in math where we have some deficits. He mentioned that earlier, that we're still working through some of our deficits. Math across the country was hit the hardest as well during the pandemic. Most of us in education felt like reading was going to be hit the hardest, but for some reason, math came out the harder hit during the pandemic. And so, again, same kind of thing you can see for math. That previous one, I didn't mention that. The previous one was ELA. This one is math on here. And so these are our current kind of focus schools. So for schools that kind of came out, so just a highlight of some of our schools who went through this process very successfully. Heritage Elementary, for example, they, I think it was the year or the year before that we took, we took them on a focus school. They had, and many of you remember this, they had unsatisfactory rating. That one year, we implemented focus school with them, and they moved from unsatisfactory to excellent rating. And again, it's not, and you can look in there, too, that after they left us, I mean, we took them on for three years, I think, two or three years. They are still maintaining that excellent rating. They're still maintaining those strategies we put in place. They are still maintaining. The teachers do an amazing job up there. As a matter of fact, they're very motivated. They're very disappointed when things, you know, they're not performing where they need to be performing. So they're, even on themselves during COVID, they were very hard on themselves during COVID as to where their kids were performing. So that speaks to, I think, when we can give them a little success. It really only took the first benchmark of us in the focus school where they saw where the kids could do. They kind of lit that fire under them and like, oh, our kids can do this, so we can move forward. And they made some tremendous gains that year. They are also ranked, they had, they, some of you were there for the pictures this past year. They also, Ms. Hester was the one up there. She had the overall highest growth in the district last year on test score. That's the highest growth that she made. So she continues, and her team continues to do amazing things at Heritage in there. Montevue, the same thing. They're currently ranked still excellent on the report card. They continue to knock out those excellent scores. Woodmont, again, currently ranked excellent. Woodmont has made some tremendous gains. Probably will come off the focus school process this year. There's still folks, they're ex, I put them on here because they're exiting because they've done such a great job moving the school achievement-wise. And then Woodmont High, it's been a couple of years since Woodmont High's been on there. But again, many of you, many of you had their picture taken with Mr. Foster at the meeting. He was also ranked overall highest growth in the district for 21, 22 school year. He has the highest graduation rate in the district overall. And then he's currently ranked excellent on the state report card. So, again, just a couple of schools, examples who exited the focus school process, who actually continue to make great, great gains and growth. The focus school process, I think this is superintendent, we'll all say, the focus school process is just about structure. It's about structure from a leadership level. It's about how to monitor instruction from the principal level. And for teachers, it's just giving them some strategies and skills and working with their PLCs on some strong strategies that actually help your students improve and what types of students sometimes that you have to work with. In some of our high ML schools, which is those five we talked about, it's working with our teachers on how do you teach students who don't speak the English language yet? How do you work with them on that? For students, same with students that if we find that they have a subgroup that is special education on the state designation, how do all teachers, Gen Ed, that's a Gen Ed problem. That's not a special education problem. That's a Gen Ed problem. How do our Gen Ed teachers work with our students who have disabilities in the classroom? And giving them those strategies to work with our students who have disabilities? So that's kind of the process, the focus school process. Like I said, the newest part there for you all would have maybe been the first, first couple of slides, just on some of those things that we continue to work with. We have a meeting today, actually, to work on what are some ways we can level the playing field for those first six or seven slides we talked about, where those schools have some higher challenges than maybe some of our other schools have in certain areas that you saw at the beginning of the slide? So that's a constant moving assessment there. And I think now we're open for questions.
Thank you, Jeff, and your team for this very, very, very informative presentation about our focus schools. Our first person with a question is, is Levente as well.
That's a lot of information, Jeff.
Yes, it is.
There's a lot of conferences that you attended to come up with all of this. I have a question for you. Having taught, I would find it very stressful. You're on your slide, slide 31, instructional rounds. When I see four administrators coming towards my classroom and gathering protocol, evidence, instructional practices, I would probably have a breakdown. Do y'all give them a heads up?
Yeah, we do. So when we take them on, it's a, thank you.
I quit.
Well, again, we keep in mind, instructional rounds and learning walks is not about the teacher feedback. We're not giving the teacher feedback at that point. So that is really when the, when the assistant superintendents work hard with the principals when we first, first bring them on as a focus school process, to communicate that to the staff and faculty, what that looks like. I would say our schools are in years even two and three and plus of our focus school. They're so used to us being in the classrooms. They're so used to people walking through their, and the assistant supers are in there all the time. My team, actually, is in classrooms all the time, walking through. So there, those focus schools specifically, yes. A new focus schools, you're correct. New focus schools, we wouldn't want to walk on day one with a cohort of people walking in the classroom, unless that's the school's normal protocol. Now, a lot of times administrators do this on their own as a school team, and so they're used to that. But it doesn't take long for them to get used to that.
So the learning walks, they're, they're very aware that y'all are going to be coming in and doing all this.
Yes.
Just when you come in with three or four, then they're still aware.
Oh, yeah.
And they're used to it, and it doesn't catch them off guard.
Right. And I think it helps, too, down the road, as they get more comfortable adding teachers to that, it becomes of less, even less of a, you know, because, again, they understand the whole point of that is to identify, where do we need to go next level as a school in there?
Because I would see your smiling face, and I would think, okay, I'm okay. All right, that's all my questions. Thank you. Well, man, I just have one more. These students in these schools, they progress, do you follow it on to high school? Because I know Berea and Carolina Academy and all of them are having difficult times. And I'm trying to figure out, how can we make this success with these students be successful in these high schools so that these students can feel like they can achieve?
Yeah, so we did not include the high schools in this. This process, like Ms. Doolan's question was elementary, middle. But the high schools, you're right. So the, really Carolina, Berea, Southside, they're, they're receiving, obviously, the students going to, for the most part, those schools. So all four, all three of those schools are actually also focus schools. So we do continue that support up into the high school level as well. And we do, I don't want to say track the students, but we do have that history of students that we can look at. And we do, especially when we're identifying kids for programs, we do look historically, you know, were they historically a struggling student? That's part of the on-track process Dr. McDavid and Ms. Lewis mentioned.
So my question is, how do we turn the perception of these schools from this to excitement? I want to go there. I want to be, I, I know I'm going to go to Southside. I know I'm going to go to Berea, and I'm excited. How do you do that?
Well, so I think-
Programs do we implement in those areas?
So I think one, probably the best examples of that we have probably was Montevue coming out. You know, Montevue and Dr. Royster spent a lot of time talking to the principal, I think it was this year, really about selling your school and really communicating and selling the great things. It's like you said, if you don't, and our message to them was, if you don't talk about your school, somebody's going to. And it may or may not be in the positive light, depending upon who it is. And so you need to highlight those good things that are going on in your schools. And so Mr. Qualls, that Ms. Bird supervises, you know, he really, that first year came in, and you'll see him all over Twitter. You see him all over, you know, that, that provides a presence to teachers when they're looking to say, I want to go to Montevue. Look at the good things they're doing there. And so really rolling that out to all schools. And then, obviously, from there, it's just, certainly report cards and test scores do matter. I mean, people look those up. People look at that when they're moving into schools, and certainly teachers do, too. So that's one of the reasons we work with these schools, because we want them to be performing at a level where people say, oh, I don't want to go to that school as well.
I think, I think that might be an agenda item for high schools, for me, those three, Southside, Carolina Academy, Berea, to follow through on everything. And also, I think what's helped, traveler's rest, because it used to be in that area as well, but they have the swamp rabbit trail going through. So now that's a hype, and that's a positive thing for that school. So what positives can we find? Thank you so much. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doolan?
Thank you. We have a lot of questions.
Okay, I'm ready.
When it comes to those that are new to our country and don't know English, right now, there's only a one-year waiver to not take a standardized test. Is that what y'all said?
Yes.
According to this chart, it would be, it would make more sense to get a three-year waiver because you're more likely to understand English enough to take a test, according to this.
Level three is definitely your target, yes.
So should we be asking for a three-year waiver?
So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Jason may know this better than I do. I think that's partly federal guidelines as far as it- It's a federal guideline, so it's not a state guideline. It's one of the federal S's requirements for students. It is an improvement over what it used to be because prior to that, there was not a waiver at all. Literally, the students, if you came in, you took the test in there. So that is a slight improvement. I don't disagree with you. The level ones and twos students are going to struggle on passing a test because they don't speak the language. They can move through those levels fairly quickly sometimes, depending upon the structures that they have in place. But it's, it's not always that they're going to move through a level one in a year or a level two in a year. It's just going to depend on the student, how much, you know.
So you could be here for six years and still be level two or three?
You could. Now, we would be intervening with you in other ways. We would start looking at, at that point, probably other disabilities that the student may have. That's hard to identify sometimes coming over when you don't speak the language until we get a good command of your education. We would typically, when you're not progressing, if you're progressing that slowly, we would start looking at some other, maybe issues.
And just one caveat I want to mention because Ms. Mosley mentioned this when I was presenting. In math, for example, students who come to our schools, regardless of where they're from, how long they've been in the United States, they still must test. Those test scores are waived for counting for accountability. So that they're still tested, maybe tested in language they don't understand. But that's what's waived, the test score use-
Accountability.
Accountability.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
And it used to be, it used to be that our students in the assistant supers and Dr. Stiles will remember this, when our old tests were happening, when we had the older tests in math, it used to be our, even our limited English proficiency, our ELL students could actually do fairly well on the math, because it's numbers, it's not as much of a foreign concept. But when we changed the new test, there's so much more reading, even in math now, that our students, we don't see as much of that in level one and two being successful on math.
Okay. On the next slide, where it comes to teacher recruitment, I'm really surprised to see that Tanglewood has 75% new or newish teachers. What do y'all think would have to be, what level of incentive would experienced teachers need to want to go and work at Berea like you, Tanglewood, or really any of these? What do you think that the level is of incentive that's going to be required?
We're looking at what that level of incentive might be. So it'd be really too early to speak to that in here in a public setting. But we're working on what might be an appropriate incentive package for teachers to go to a school and stay in that school, particularly our most challenging schools. I doubt we'll have that ready for this year's budget, but likely would have it ready for next year's budget. If not on a full-scale implementation basis, on a pilot basis, excuse me, for our schools where we're having the greatest challenge. We're also looking at some things that would better serve our short, our teachers that have been there the shortest amount of time. You'll probably see some of those things in general fund budget recommendation for this year. We've used incentives to a very limited degree a number of years ago. They proved at that point not to be effective, but that's been now more than, probably more than 12 years ago. And I believe our statistics here, just to make sure we're clear on them, that's in the core, Jeff, not total teaching staff, which is even more problematic, but it's the core teaching positions.
So it's math and English teachers, not art and gym?
Well, math, English, science, social studies.
Math and science being our largest, probably, because it's a shortage period across all of our schools. It's a shortage area.
What, do you mind, do you remember what the incentive was that you tried before?
I don't recall the dollar amount, and I'd be afraid to guess it, or it's been too long ago.
Well, I'll tell y'all, if it was me and I was teaching, I would go for $25,000 more. I'm not being, this isn't a joke. That's what it would take.
Well, so that'd be 25,000 times 1.42, because our fringe is 42% on a dollar.
And how many teachers is it? Maybe y'all could put that together. How many teachers are teaching core classes? And even at 20,000 more...
Forty-one at Tanglewood.
How much will it cost to pay them all at least 20,000 more of what they're currently making?
Well, 20,000, just rough estimate, will be 1.42 times 20,000 times 41.
Well, but that's not for a brand-new teacher's salary, but for someone who has been working for 10 or 15 or 20 years, they're already going to be making a lot more, right?
You're talking about just paying that to a first-year teacher?
No, no first-year teachers. I want experienced teachers. So for me, if I'm making 60,000...
You still got 41, you still got 41 teachers, core, 41 core teachers. If you want all those core, no matter what criteria you set for, three years' experience, five years' experience, 10 years' experience, if you want to pay them $20,000 a year more, it's 20,000 times 1.42 times 41. How much is that, Robin? How much? $1.2 million more salary and fringe in that one school. Now, what effect does that have on our other schools? So that's why I don't want to say to you today, I believe it ought to be this amount, because there's all kind of ramifications to this amount. There are challenging teaching situations all over the district. So what would be appropriate incentives to cause someone to go there? And to what level must they perform to stay there and to continue to draw that incentive? So there are all kinds of questions, and you don't want to gut the other school's teaching staff to fix this teaching staff. So I think there has to be a combination of efforts made. That's wrong. This is not something we want to rush into. We want to give you a well-reasoned proposal and likely do it on a pilot basis, and then see if that really makes a difference. There's not a lot of information out there that shows it makes a difference. So we're seeking where, what other districts with similar sets of circumstances have they implemented an incentive-based pay program? And what did that look like? What was the cost to it? And I believe the one that seems to have been the most successful at this point, Jeff, Clark County, Nevada, and they were own, they were not recognizing sustained improvement in theirs, if I remember that correctly.
Theirs was, theirs was actually only a recruitment bonus, so it was not a performance bonus. It was just a recruitment to pay teachers to go to a school, but there was no performance requirement currently on it. They're part of my consortium that's reworking some of that as well.
In other words, you're getting that extra pay for being there, but there was no performance tied to it. And my understanding is now they're going back and looking at adding a perform, because it wasn't having the effect that they wanted it to. Getting them there wasn't necessarily, and them just getting more money wasn't necessarily producing better results. And the other part of that is that you have to look at, we're only looking at the core here. What about the non-core teachers? You didn't pay them the same thing you pay teachers in other parts of the district? Well, they could make a good argument that I contribute as a non-core teacher, I contribute to the improvement of test scores in math or ELA. And in fact, if we're doing instruction the way we should, they are. Would we pay counselors in those schools more? Would we pay the secretary there more? Would we pay the custodial staff there more? So there's all, the more, the more research you do, kind of the more questions you have, and that drives having to get more answers. It makes sense on the front end to say, if we paid people more, they'd be more inclined to come here. And that's, I think, probably going to be true. But then you get into the details of to what degree. And the research still shows that they're more attracted and retained by the leadership than they are by the salary. It's not an easy problem to dissect nor to put together effective strategies to deal with.
I understand that. But for a new teacher to go and teach there, they get their loans forgiven, and that's a huge incentive. And no one else has, there's no other financial incentive for anyone else to go except for very new teachers.
Well, anybody that has outstanding loan, no matter whether they're a new teacher or not, that would, they could get forgiveness. However, the number of schools where you can get forgiveness is far in excess of the number of Title I schools. Margaret, how many are there? You remember? Double, double. I was thinking about 40. I might not be right. It well exceeds...
It's a lot. I know.
Yes. But to your point, that is an incentive, but it's generally available to a fairly large number of schools.
Well, and the other challenges, like students moving around and their attendance, that's not something that we really have that much control over. So it seems like recruitment and maybe asking for some other sort of waiver for those that don't know English. It seems like those are the only things that we can do differently.
Well, I think what we would say to that is the biggest thing that we can do is exercise control where we have it, and that's this whole focus school process.
Right?
By doing those learning walks, by doing that instructional supervision, and then carrying it out. It's already been used as, I guess, as an example already, but Montevue serves the same community as these other schools serve. It's got an excellent rating. They have implemented those things that being part of focus school process requires you to do and are continuing to keep those things in place. So we know that's an area over which we have control. If we go in and do those things with that faculty, they will improve. All that data in there shows you that. Now, when we walk out the door, because the academic staff can't stay over there forever, nor should they, that school leadership team then has to continue with that process, because those things that were described, those are continuous processes. And quite honestly, to some degree or another, those are the processes really highly effective school leaders have always done. It maybe didn't look exactly like this, but they were doing those things. They were going in classrooms. They were giving feedback to teachers, meaningful feedback, not just, I went in there, everything was great today. You know, A, I saw this particular thing you were doing, I believe because of these reasons it was highly effective. Or, you know, I saw this thing you were doing, and it really wasn't going very well. I could tell that by what I had seen, the reaction of your students, what I had seen there. Have you thought about doing this? That's the kind of thing that builds instructional improvement. And that's what quality instructional leadership was. That's a very oversimplified version. But, you know, there was a time when no one ever came in a teacher's room. No one. A principal might show up there if there was some kind of emergency or something, but they didn't come in that room. Wouldn't have made that point already. So when they come in here, whoa, what are they doing in here? Well, the norm ought to be there's some people coming in and out there all the time with the intent of coaching you, helping you, not with the intent of going in there and micromanaging what you're doing. And it helps, it helps excellent teachers as well as marginal teachers. But you got to do it with marginal teachers, because we want to either get them improved or exited, one of the two. You can't keep being marginal, because that, a student only gets to be in a grade one time. And we can't allow a teacher to continue to be marginal year after year after year. That's the way to fix those things. Then this is costly as well.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. So forty-eight out of our, I guess we've got, what, like 86 regular schools, so 48 of them can get loan forgiveness.
Well, when, now I'm looking at slides 41 and 42. Do you think that if you did want to try a pilot program for incentives, would you want to start in middle school math? Like, do you think you would just do one subject and see if it makes a difference?
Our discussions to this point have been to do a whole school, perhaps an elementary and a middle. That's been our discussion at this point, to look at a whole school. We'll have a, we got a control group, because we've got other schools with similar populations.
I think I remember seeing that to run a school for a year costs between eight and 10 million-ish. Does that seem right?
Yeah. I mean, it just depends on, our schools are such varying size. It depends on the sky, the size of school, but...
I think when I looked, the average was, it was in one of the books that we got, but I think eight to 10 million. So spending another, what would be 10% just on incentives to get experienced teachers there seems like an awful lot.
Well, that's what, that's what 1.42 times 20,000 times that number of teachers is. I mean, there's no question about that.
But right now, we're spending eight or 10 million dollars a year, where according to SC Ready, there's 70 to 80 to 90% of children are not meeting expectations. So it's already a huge investment with really not, according to this, not a, not a big payoff. So do we reinvest more money and hope that that makes a bigger difference?
Well, that's the whole question behind is incentive pay actually going to produce increased student achievement?
You know, the other thing that improves achievement usually is smaller class sizes, which would mean we need a lot more schools there.
Well, actually, you got to get down to below 15. All right, so if you reduce class size, you get it below 15. You're already struggling to put quality teachers in the classes you have now. So if you create a model where you need more teachers, and you've not done anything about increasing the quality of the teachers you're putting in those rooms, that will make the problem worse. A larger class taught by a better quality teacher is more beneficial to students than smaller classes taught by a teacher of lesser quality. So why this whole thing about improving teacher quality is so important.
Well, is there anything specific that you can point to that happened last year or the year before, other than COVID, for why scores would, like at Lakeview, in their math department? You know, if they were, I mean, were teachers on maternity leave or...
Well, they always have some of that with maternity, or they're out, or, you know, those kinds of reasons. But I mean, the bulk of that is chalked up to COVID. We just had such huge deficits, mostly because the students didn't have, you know, they missed a whole, some of the students, and again, more on our white horse road, more are students in poverty. And again, that's a countrywide trend, just didn't have the supports to, you know, keep pace. But all of our students took a little hit, obviously. We, most of our schools, we bounced back with, but certainly in those populations of schools. And again, you've got, when you look at, again, to your point, when you look at that, those first slide where we had the teacher piece on that, you know, we were unable in some cases to do as much work in those schools as we would normally do when it came to COVID. I mean, we were not in schools, able to work as much in those schools during COVID. So our specialists weren't able to be in there coaching like we would have done, particularly for that one year that we were out. We got back to that, really, the second year of COVID, whatever, the third year, I lost track of that now. But, but that, to Dr. Royce's point, that does make a huge impact. Those newerish teachers makes a huge impact on instruction, as does teacher turnover. I mean, as teachers turn over, that's one of the biggest things that we, you know, if we challenge with teacher turnover, we start all over again. If you think about that, we, the superintendents are in there working, my team is in there working, we work with teachers, we get them to a certain level, and then if they leave the next year, you're starting all back over again, most likely based on those numbers with a newish teacher. And so that's, again, that's why we're having those conversations about, you know, at least looking at incentives in other districts that do things like that. Or at the ML population, we do with Title One money, at times we do reduce that a little bit further. So we're looking at some of those kind of strategies. Do we reduce that to a smaller ratio in those classrooms so that, you know, we have a smaller ratio of ML students to, to teachers who can support that? It's, like I said, it's a big difference when you have half your classes ML versus one or two ML students in there, strategy-wise.
What, since we only have one language school, which is Blythe, right? What, how do the students there compare? Because I think what, a third of those are native Spanish-speaking, but are enrolled in, is that...
No, they, I'd have to pull their numbers, but the bulk of the Blythes Academy, the bulk of Blythe Academy students are, they're learning French or Spanish, but they're, the bulk of them are native English speakers.
Oh, I thought I read that a third were...
I'd have to pull their number. Brenda, you may know that better, but I don't, last time I looked at their ML population, it wasn't quite that high. And their poverty's much lower.
Well, it is. Rainbow Country Club neighborhood.
Right, it is a big school choice, too.
Right. But there also are children who live, I mean, I lived over there, and my child went.
And they certainly have an ML population, certainly in there, would have some, but it wouldn't be, the comparison would be a little bit off, just because the poverty certainly is not there.
But it also, don't students from the other side of 85 attend, and that area is not as affluent?
There is, there is areas of Blythe that is not as affluent.
Blythe is becoming more and more affluent. When you get across, so when you get below Blythe, then you, then you're moving into the Kerns attendance area. Their neighborhood attendance area is not all that large. But I don't, I doubt it, it doesn't go much past, what, about five streets towards Old South Side, towards MT Anderson? It's pretty much the immediate neighborhood and it's Greenville Country Club. And then there's tremendous gentrification occurring in those streets that are to the south of Blythe, which would be in that Hughes and Blythe neighborhood. So they're becoming a more and more affluent community. When you get across the interstate, some of those are Kerns students and some of those are Cashion students. And there may be a few welcome, but I would hesitate to say there are any from welcome. Now, if you go far enough down into the west to Sioux Cleveland. But it, this goes back to, if you go back and look at those influences from outside and there's all, there's so much research about this that is just unquestionable. The higher the level of poverty, the greater the academic struggle. Now, that does not mean that students living in an impoverished community cannot perform well. That doesn't mean they can't learn, doesn't mean they can't be taught, doesn't mean any of those things. But if you want to know one thing to predict academic attainment in a school, ask about the poverty level. Because it has so many other incumbent barriers, so many things that students have to overcome and so many things that are not part of their experience. So our greatest challenge for academic achievement is always going to be in the highest concentration of poverty. And in Greenville County, the highest concentration of poverty, pull that map back up, Jeff, what slide was that? If you look at that map, there you go. And if you look up there, the school furthest to the north up there is Berea Middle. And White Horse Road is the line that runs right there next to Berea Middle, it runs all the way down. If you were to run down Highway twenty-five from just south of Berea Middle School to about Donaldson Center and go about a mile and a half to two miles on either side of it, you would find the highest concentration of poverty in all of Greenville County. You would find the highest rate of crime in Greenville County. You would find the lowest per capita income in Greenville County. You would find the lowest level of educational attainment in Greenville County. All the measures of success would be very low. And all those measures that would be associated with great challenge or failure would be very high. Do we have pockets of poverty other places? We certainly do. There's students in poverty in really every school in this district, but not at this density. And that therein lies the greatest challenge, but we have no control over that. We only have control over what we do when they come to us. And that goes back to us exerting as much control as we possibly can over the improvement of the teaching we do with them. And whatever we can do to get quality teachers in there without, same token, there's only so many, such a pool of teachers, we don't want to gut the other schools' best teachers to staff those schools. Because we'd simply be moving the problem in if we do that. So it has to be a combination of getting as good quality teachers we can get in there and taking the teachers we have in there and making them the best teacher they can possibly be. This is not a new problem.
It's not, and since you, I mean, it's, White Horse Road corridor has that name for a reason. But maybe the county, instead of offering all those FLO agreements at places that don't really need them, maybe they could only offer them here in hopes of improving those communities. Maybe the county could start planning better.
What are you looking at me for?
Because you, because you are on the, you're chair of advocacy.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I won't take more time. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doolin. I have four other speakers and I think we have about, what, about ten minutes left on this. All right, next speaker, Ms. Mosley.
Thanks, Ms. Goodwood Call. Jeff, thanks so much for all of this information. I feel like my head is swimming, but I appreciate Ms. Doolin asking these, these hard questions and I really do appreciate the district's response. My questions are pretty short. I, I think you, I think I saw seven years on one school of the first, how long have we been doing this, this more? I'm going to call it a formal process of focus schools.
Seven years.
Oh, it has been seven years.
Mr. Davy and I actually were the, Lakeview was the pilot school. Mr. Davy was the assistant superintendent for middle schools at the time. So that was our first kind of pilot focus school.
Okay, and so clearly you, we've been doing it long enough to have data that shows that we have some success coming out of it, as you have indicated. So I noticed that, I believe it was Ms. Lewis indicated, a couple of new curriculum things we've adopted, the SAVUS. And then there was a numbers, Number World? New curriculum. How often do we evaluate? Okay, so we've adopted that this year and we're going to implement it and we're obviously going to evaluate it. And let's say it doesn't evaluate well, do we give it another chance or do we scrap it and move on? I mean, how quick, how often do we?
So we don't typically, now the SAVUS and the letter is a little different because it's required from the state level. Because of those schools are on that Palmetto literacy list we talked about before. So that's a little different, but typically we would evaluate, we don't normally, we will do a soft evaluation after the first year, but typically that, that one year is just teachers getting used to it and all that. Typically, the third year is what most research would say, at that point, you need to be heavy evaluating. That's typically when I would bring Jason in, three, four, or five years to say, we need a real qualitative research study on this. Our team would be looking at, Dr. McDonald would be looking at that, you know, the kids particularly that are in that Number Worlds Intervention Group, do we see gains happening on their test scores? So actually, it takes, to your point, I mean, it takes actually looking at individual children to see, are they moving?
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, we'll most likely be using this Number World for at least three years. So maybe in three years, we'll know, we will hear how successful that's been.
Yes, and we certainly would have some data even after the first and second year.
Okay, and my last question, to kind of piggyback off of what Ms. Doolin asked Dr. Royster is, if it's not practical or feasibly practical to incent teachers to schools like this, I think I heard you say that research shows that it's not so much compensation that incents them to stay somewhere, it's leadership. So how are we thinking about leadership in these schools? Because I know there has been some turnover at some, but let's face it, there are fantastic administrators in our district and there's some that maybe wouldn't be the right fit for a school like this. So how do we incent them, the ones that are really our star administrators, that might make a difference in a school like this, to want to go there? If they're not already there?
Well, financially would be one thing. Some of them are incentivized just by the challenge of moving a school. We've had several hours that are the most successful because they just like the challenge of moving a school. We, we, we have paid principals more to be in more difficult situations. We've had mixed results with that, really. If you're, if you're a good principal, you probably be a pretty good principal in any school, but not every principal can be a great principal in every school. So some of that's finding a fit and a fit for the community and a fit for the, for the faculty and staff. Sometimes it's also finding somebody that's not like the one before, which is almost always true. Even if there's a really good person that left, you're kind of looking for one that's not quite exactly like them to follow. Up until about two or three years ago, salary ranked about fourth or fifth for why teachers came or went from a place. In the last several years, it's moved up to about number one. But number two is still leadership in the building. So part of all this coaching is improving that leadership, it's not just improving the teacher. Because the other side of that is, just like, there's just so many teachers out there. The pool of potential principals has shrunk over the years. And we're still getting good quality principals in jobs. But where, five years ago, we might have had seven outstanding candidates for a job. We're now seeing three or four outstanding candidates. That's, that makes a difference. And we're seeing people who want to move out of the principalship because of the stress or the demands, whatever it might be. So they're not wanting to stay as long. That's problematic as, as well, for, for a couple of reasons. One is really, there's nowhere for them, not many places for them to go that's an elevation or a promotion. So that's why, as we've looked at these incentive models, we've looked at, in the discussion we've had to this point, again, just a discussion, because there's a lot more work we need to do on this, is incentivizing everybody in the building. So now, for most of the employees in the building, it wouldn't be just to work there, it would be because you performed better. Because your school performed better. So in other words, if the school moved up, then everybody in the school would get some extra compensation. You wouldn't necessarily make more to be a custodian at that school than a custodian in another school. But if your whole school improved, you might, you'd get some sort of pro rate of share. That's what we're looking at, again, kind of early to talk about details. Because when we have to look at, you know, what is ultimately be the price, the price tag? How far would we want to go with it? Can we sustain it over time? But, you know, the most important part, does it even work? And so far, there's just not, Clark County is the, I guess, the best example.
Georgia.
In that they were able to get who they considered to be quality teachers to move to those schools. But they hadn't seen a corresponding tremendous increase in performance.
Yes, and I think, Dr. Royster, I think where they saw, just working with them a little bit, they saw, because they were attracting veteran teachers, because of the recruitment bonus, they saw some increase, but not where, when we're talking about these types of schools, not quite where it needs to be increase wise, which is why, again, they're just kind of revising, looking at revising their model.
They didn't feel like they were getting their money's worth.
Correct.
Kind of, that's sort of my, my take on it.
Yes, first, I'd like to say, Jeff, thank you to you and the entire administrative team for this presentation. It's a lot of great information and I appreciate that very much. And I had just a couple of kudos that I wanted to share because I think it's very, very important to acknowledge these points in the presentation. I really appreciated the fact that you guys are taking the preventative approach. In other words, you're looking to schools who may go into those state designated schools to try to prevent that. And you're looking at schools who've been on it to try to make sure they don't slip back. I think that is imperative and very, very important. And I think that's a sign of a really strong administrative team, so thank you for that. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Royster and the team as well, this year in particular, for the recognition of the schools and the leaders who've made great strides. I, I just want you to know that I think that's been one of the best things that we've done. And I, I just encourage you guys and Dr. Royster, I encourage you, let's build on that. Let's recognize those who do what we want to get done. I think that's so important and I think teachers and administrators are starved for recognition, so thank you for that. And I want to go back to this, we've talked about this pilot and I've, I've been talking about that. I've talked to the state superintendent of education about that. And I just want to, you know, I don't want to belabor the points, but I just want to share my deep thoughts. When I look at those schools, and I say this as an administrator myself who's retired, and I look at the number of new teachers and I look at the percentage of turnover. It's obvious to me, the new teachers are coming, we're investing so much in their training and then they're leaving. Some of them will never, ever return to their profession. Our state is in crisis for teacher retreat, excuse me, teacher retention and recruitment. These are some of the reasons why. And I, I'll say my belief as a leader is where there's a will, there's a way. And maybe we can't give stop and start a roster. Maybe we don't have the ideal plan laid out.
But let's stand for ten minutes.
Maybe we don't have the ideal plan. I can see that what you're planning could take two years, it's a lot of work. I have another idea. Let's take baby steps. Why not go to the teacher forum, some of our best teachers in all of our schools and say, hey, we have an idea. We have an idea that we'd really like to try. And we're looking for some teachers who are excited and innovative and want to be a part of something new and to give us feedback to help us build and grow a program that can maybe be a model across this nation for our at-risk schools, our underperforming schools. I would challenge your team, Dr. Royster, to think about that. Let's take some baby steps. We don't have to fill all those roles with master teachers, we don't have to pay stipends at this point. But do we have some innovative teachers who would be willing to go and to be a part of something that's new? I would encourage baby steps. I hope we'll do that and I'll get off that bandwagon. I just want to make that point because I just feel like we have an opportunity to be cutting edge and innovative. And I don't want this to die, I don't want us to lose it. And I would love to see us start taking some steps. Because if we had some teachers in the program sooner than two years, then they could give us the feedback and they could help us build the model that we're looking for and that we're wanting in our district to close the gap on these schools. So just thank you for listening to that and hopefully you'll consider that. Also, I wanted to say on the, in regard to the walkthroughs, I think that they are very valuable and I really appreciate the fact that for our state designated schools, we have some of our best and brightest, our assistant superintendents. I've worked with them and for them, I know that we've got some of the best going into those schools to give feedback. That is phenomenal. And so I thank you guys for that. I know you have a really busy job and you do a lot, you have a lot on your plate. That's time well spent. And not many districts can claim that kind of participation with their assistant superintendents, I can tell you that. And I want to point out one comment that you made, Jeff. You mentioned that you would like to get master teachers involved in that. And I just want to say, again, as a retired administrator, I think it's really important that we give our teachers who have a grasp on how to be proficient and how to be successful. I think it's really important that we give them opportunities for leadership. Teachers are hungry for leadership, they're hungry for recognition, they want to be recognized for the job that they do and the job that they do well. We need master teachers involved in this to give them that opportunity. And also to be there on site to support these teachers, to let them become invested in these new teachers who are struggling or need help with their walkthroughs. So I would encourage that. I understand that that takes money. I understand that that takes a block of time for that purpose. But again, here's an opportunity for us as a district to be innovative, to be creative, to do something unique and different. And I think that's one of the keys that you said, is involving master teachers and giving them an opportunity for leadership. I believe if we were able to add that component, that it would be an added layer of support that would make a difference. Also, let's see, someone, I have one more thing here. In regard to the attendance, I was really concerned, again, I, you know, I was a principal for twenty-five years, so I looked at my attendance. I compared my attendance with other schools. I was really disappointed, I'll just, you know, be honest, I felt the attendance rates were low overall. And I just, I know when I was a principal, we had a lot of incentives to get children to attend school. And I know we had efforts at the district level for that, to support that. And I just had a question, I guess, Dr. Royster, this would be for you. Do we have incentives or are we recognizing principals, like we're talking about recognition? Are we recognizing the principals who are doing a great job in getting in? Are we recognizing the principals who are doing a great job in getting their students to school? Who have high attendance rankings or scores? And are we allowing them to share with other principals what they're doing? What are we doing to really promote that? That concerns me, 93, 92%, that's not acceptable.
I don't know how much sharing they're doing, they would do that within their level groups. We don't have, we don't do any specific recognition for attendance. I would imagine that a fair number of those that got recognition this year for their academics also have pretty high attendance, because there's generally some correlation there. Our attendance has suffered since the pandemic, was higher than this prior to the pandemic, both employee and student attendance. Of course, we're still now being adversely impacted by this triple threat of flu, COVID, and this respiratory, whatever this respiratory thing is that's going around. So there's some good reasons it's lower, but I think there are also some reasons that are not so good, that, that, that we're not seeing an emphasis from families on their children being in school. And we have some schools that do, do some recognitions of their students. I don't know how many, I'd have to get that from either the assistant superintendents or from Ken Arnold. But I know that we have schools that do recognition for superior attendance. Put them in some cases in drawings for prizes, that kind of thing. And I think they've had some success with that, but it's certainly an area of improvement.
And Dr. Syl, I should have, I probably should have caveated this data too. This was last year's data, so we were still under the required quarantines and the COVID. So all that's factoring into this. I want to say, I, I think this is, we can get the number, I want to say before COVID, I was thinking we were around like 94%, if I remember correctly. So for us, this is lower, but it does factor in, because the way the state calculates it, it does factor in. While it doesn't penalize a child, it does factor in the quarantines and all that kind of stuff into this data as well.
I recall, Jeff, we were about 90, I, I think 90, 94% sticks in my mind as well.
Well, I do know from experience that incentives make a huge difference. For example, perfect attendance recess every quarter, you know, recognizing at, at awards day students with perfect attendance. There's just a lot of simple, easy implementation strategies that can be done to, to increase our numbers. I hope we'll look at that and focus on that again.
Dr. Presley?
Hey, thank you, um, thank you, Jeff, and, and, and the team for this great presentation. I have a, a question about the whole idea of incentivizing. And I don't know who, who this would, would go to, maybe multiple people, but have we looked at the, I'm going to say something that's probably going to terrify some folks, but have we taken a look at the TAP model, the Teacher Advancement Program model, regarding the question of how to continue to incentivize in, in our schools that we're, that we're looking at right now, the, the focus schools? Specifically, the components of that value-add model that, and one of the, one of the most amazing things about that is that, that shows growth for students starting from where they are, right? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just be really, really over the top simplistic for my own purpose at this point. So let's say you have a, a child who is 10 clicks below where he or she should be on their, by, by their grade level, right? 10 clicks below. We know that the, the chance of growing a child 10 clicks in an academic year with some of those really, really pronounced deficits are, is, is virtually impossible, right? Can it be done sometimes? Yes. But usually, you're not going to pull them past where, you know, to the grade level they're below, and then all the way to the grade level they need to be in a year, in a year of instruction. One of the things that that value-add model does is, is that it honors how much a child did grow, right? How much that child was moved over the, the course of the year, as far as their academic growth. I'm wondering if we've looked at how to incentivize that? Because one of the things that's demoralizing for teachers in these schools is, y'all, they're, the chances that they're catching a child up to where they need to be, if they're already behind the grade level they should be at, to get them to the next grade level is, is near to impossible. I want to commend Gringle County for the elements of, of, of this and other grade models that they already have in place. The PLC structure, the coaching cycle. I know we have a benchmark process. I had a question up here, how are our benchmarks correlated to SC Ready? Because that would be kind of that, as, as Dr. McCreary referenced it, an autopsy assessment. But do we have a benchmark process that would help us take a look, a closer look over time at how, how students are growing? Something like an NWEA MAP test, right? Which I know, you know, there's pros and cons to that, but it does, it does provide that. I'm not by any means saying that we need to move our schools to the TAP model. I'm well aware of how extensive that is. But is there, has there been any, any movement toward looking at that model to take, to glean what we can that we don't already have over kind of that value-add? Okay, they were here, this particular teacher and this particular school moved them this far. That constitutes this, this level. Because what that does, it takes, I have a real problem with looking across the district and saying that teacher A in this particular school could potentially move into one of our focus schools and change the world. I've chuckled many times imagining taking a staff from a more affluent school, and please don't think I'm speaking disparagingly, my, my child went to Augusta Circle, right? I'm all about eight, I think they're wonderful. If you took a class from, or if you took a cadre of teachers from a, from a, an affluent school or a school that is not struggling with all of the variables that Superintendent Royster just described, running down that White Horse Road corridor, and you drop them out there, I'd have my popcorn and bowling there. Because these are, these are challenges that, that you cannot fathom unless you're living it and you're in the, in the midst of that. So the, one of the things that a good value-add model, as far as to incentivize pay, it, it actually levels the playing field and shows that this, this kid was here, and we moved them seven clicks. We moved them 10 clicks, right? We've got them this much closer. It honors the growth, but it doesn't kick the teacher in the side of the head for not being able to do what nobody on the planet should do as far as moving that child forward. I'm going to climb back down off my soapbox. I hope my question was, was clearer this time. It's, it's specifically, how closely have we looked at the TAP model? Or models that are, that are very similar, that has a robust formative assessment piece in it that, that shows growth? Not just will they, they master these particular pieces that lets, you know, they, they've got this particular standard, but that's showing that growth within it. We may, we may have that right now with our benchmarking process. I've not looked really closely at that, have not had time yet, but that would be my question. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Presley, so the benchmarking process has some possibilities with that. The, you know, we, we would just had to look at that closely, because we don't want, really want the benchmark to become a standardized test, a super secure test, which is what you would have to do to, you know, so it's not manipulated there. Our benchmarks, to your other question, are correlated about 94% predictability. So it's a great predictability towards, and we see that, and some of it's dead on. I mean, what it predicts is what the school overall earns. Yes, the, some of the groups I'm working with around the country, there is some districts in there who utilize the TAP model. So certainly that influence has been in some of those discussions I've had with district leaders. And the ones, it's a smaller group right now that we're working with, about six districts, that are looking at moving to this model, or have, moving to a incentive model, or have had one and just looking to revise it because aspects of it are not working anymore. So yeah, so that influence certainly is there, Dr. Presley. And I certainly am familiar with the TAP model too, and I agree with you, there's certain aspects I really like about it, and there's, you know, some that I think could be tweaked better to serve. So yes, I appreciate that, and, and that influence certainly is in the discussions we're having.
Thank you, Dr. Presley. Mr. Cocker.
Thank you. I would like to go back to, I think it was slide seven, again, for a moment. And I, I just had a question about statistically, where, of course, we have so many first-year teachers there, but then we have almost no second-year teachers, which I'm just kind of assuming that maybe we would have had a lot of first-year teachers the year before in those schools as well. Is that the case? Are we not retaining hardly any of those first-year teachers? Or is, is something else going on to where we have that many first-year teachers and not hardly any second-year teachers in those schools?
It certainly does depend on the year. The, the, this particular year, of course, was last year's data that we're using. But yes, I mean, your assessment would be correct. I mean, and, and we do have some retention challenges at those schools as well among teachers too.
We, we can send you the breakout for that. We had a discussion about that when we first started looking at this information, which was well prior to doing this presentation. Because in some cases, we, we lost them immediately after the first year. And some of these are replacements from more experienced teachers. But instead of us trying to speculate, the answer would be send it to you for those five schools.
And just one more quick question. Other than the strategies that you mentioned that your team had implemented, is there one or two other things that you could point to, to account for the amazing turnaround at Heritage Elementary that they accomplished in such a short period of time?
Yes, and before I answer that question, Mr. Cocker, I want to correct one thing on your previous question that Mr. Dr. McDonald reminded me. This is the 2223 data. That's just simply saying, we have, for 2223, we have one second-year teacher at Berea. And 2223, we have 18 first-year teachers. So to do what you're asking for, I would need to go back one more year to see how many of those first-year teachers were now second. I'm assuming it's one, but I would need to go back and look. So I, I apologize, that was confusing, but I wanted to clarify that, that answer for you. And we can get you trend data over a couple of years if you wanted to follow that cohort as well. Oh, yeah, Heritage, I'm sorry, I forgot your question. Heritage, so there are several things with Heritage. I think one of the things with that is they had a, a, a really strong administration already on staff. I mean, as far as administrators go, they had a very strong, and we had a very eager leader there. I think all of our leaders want to learn. Heritage did not have, again, when you put them in the level of where they fit in with some of these other schools, they're not quite the high poverty, you know, challenges like you would have at a Berea, Tanglewood, Cherrydale, those types of schools. I will, I think I may have mentioned this, but when we hit that first benchmark, I would say we struggled, I think it was you with that scoring. We struggled that first semester, first quarter, as we do with all schools when we first go in. Because sometimes it's about what the kids can't do, and well, the kids just can't, you know, they come from poverty, they have this, they have that. Really, for Heritage, what took off for them is once they got that, once we worked in their strategies, and teachers were fairly, for the most part, very, very receptive. When they saw that first benchmark scores that shot up, they were extremely kind of on fire after that. They realized, oh, the kids can do this, well, if we just do this a little harder. So that, for them, caught fire a little quicker at Heritage than sometimes it does at other schools. That we have to, I don't want to say prove it, but we come, sometimes the stuff that we're doing in the classrooms and doing, we have to prove a little bit that it does work. And then I think Ms. Hester, I mean, just, you know, she's, like many of our principals, she's an incredible leader. I mean, she's very instructional oriented, and she really took our processes, and she really, with her team, took the task, you know, embracing what we were doing for that. As a matter of fact, I think we kept them one more year than technically we probably would have, because at her request, she won one more year of support as a leader herself, which we will do if a principal asks. But I would attribute that to that, it was a little quicker process there, because it caught on fire a little bit. Even now, the teachers are, like I said, during COVID, when they had the scores they were getting, which was understandable, they were very disappointed in their scores.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Cocker. We're gonna move on. Okay. Ms. Bush, you have a question.
So to speak, when you look at that corridor of all those elementary schools feeding into those same middle schools, feeding into those same high schools that, that have struggled the 28 years I've been on this board, with those same issues, and the one being the high poverty. As we, as we, because of being, representing part of that community, and, and I would say, I claim all of them, and, and I, and I'm impressed this morning that I have not heard anyone say their schools or those schools, or that, that we've all, this board has, has really stepped up and said, they're all our schools. So it doesn't matter whose district they lie in. We hold the responsibility for giving you guys the resources. And what can we do as a board? What policies can we set? What resources can we provide to be able to make our schools? But within those schools, and, and me knowing that, those communities to where Berea Elementary, Duncan Chapel, Armstrong, just going right down, they're, they're literally just blocks, because I think a lot of it, you know, came from that extension of Mill Villages years ago on that west side. I need about five minutes. Okay, okay. So they, knowing that there's a lot of shifting, and there's a lot of shifting, as you said, from out of a school, back into a school, back out of the school, back into the school. Because as, as, as parents and guardians of those children, try to find, you know, different housing and, and even dealing with homelessness. And maybe they live with grandparents, and they're here at this school, they're Armstrong, and then all of a sudden, they move, and they're in Duncan Chapel's area. And are we making sure that we, if they're already in that school, and they're accounted for, and so it doesn't affect our teachers' numbers? I just want to make sure that if that, if those parents, I know that we can't provide, if they're not in that geocode, we can't provide the transportation. But if they're, because I've, I've, over the years, had parents call and say, look, we're having to move in. I'm getting divorced, moving in with grandparents. My kids have always gone to Berea Elementary. Now we're living in Duncan Chapel's, or now we're living in, can, can those children? How, how strict are we at saying, let those children finish the year out without moving? Out to Duncan Chapel, and then when mom finds a house that's back in that, or apartment, or a mobile home that's back in there, then, then they're back. So, because that explains some of that. We're out, we're back, we're here, and so how strict are we as far as, as, as in that little regional area, paying especially notice and maybe being a little bit more lenient as far as our attendance codes are?
As far as remaining in a school, probably that would be the area where we're the most lenient of everywhere in the county. The, the challenge there is, as you already described it, and there's, they don't have a way to get there.
Yeah.
If we had all of our other transportation problems resolved, the thing to do would be to continue to provide transportation. Because in general, you're not talking about a great distance in mileage. But we can't run the routes that we've got to the regular schools. But ideally, and we talked about this a number of years ago, would be to allow them, particularly the middle and elementary school level, to just run a bus, let them be picked up from the bus where they're being dropped off at the new school and go back to the old school. At least we don't have the infrastructure to do that right now. That would be probably a solution, but we are very lenient with students staying there. Now, as students are homeless, we will, we do provide transportation for students that are homeless.
I, great, that makes me feel much better, because I know I have consistently, throughout my time on the board, had, had parents call and say, look, this is just a temporary thing. Or do I have to move my child to this other school? And I always direct them to the district office, and, and after kind of this all coming together here today, thinking, if, if, if that can make it easier on parents and on home with all the challenges that they're already facing. And, and my concern would be also about the, when you pick a pilot school, is, say, okay, we're three years down the road. We've done this, all this great work, and we've got this pilot school. We've got Alexander that's going to get all these bonuses, or however we figure it out. all these bonuses, or however we figure it out. And then we look at the fact that only so much percent of those students at that school, that still doesn't change the fact that we're only impacting because part of those kids are now, the ones that were at Alexander are now at my view, or Armstrong, or Berea Elementary. So even, even with all that great work, and I don't want to deter us from, from going that direction, but there is gonna be that constant in that community that, um, hopefully we are helping to address with some of the United Way and our partnerships within, um, community efforts that, um, those struggles that, that those families have with.
You know, and, and, you know, and part of the calculation has to be, and part of the planning and the discussion is, all right, if we do it, these two places to start with. Ultimately, we need to do it at this many.
Yeah.
So we have to work from the scale backwards. So if we think this level of incentive, based on the information we gather from other places, this level of incentive will, will bring these kinds of teachers in. Then can we reasonably replicate that level of incentive at these ten schools, not just these two?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm finished. Thank you very much. It's a wonderful presentation.
Any more questions? Okay, we're gonna move, um, three point zero three to the February county meeting. So that's the end of the instructional part. I turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much. And, um, I know we, 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 we kind of frown on trying, on extending this much, but this was very important. I thank Ms. Doolan for putting that on there. And I think it was a, an awesome presentation and gave us a lot of, a lot of things to think about. And, um, so, um, uh, well, we, we don't want to short our arms program. I want to thank Mr. Wingate for being here this morning and sitting through, and, and make sure that by moving you to February, that it gets all of you, get all of the time and attention that we need to go to the, because I understand there's some incredible information that we're gonna be getting out of the update on the arms program. So thank you very much. And the next item, the last item, um, since we are, um, we're not gonna break for lunch, we'll just go ahead and quickly cover this, um, building and grounds, because since we were scheduled to finish up, that way when we get finished with building and grounds, I think they, uh, pick up lunch, you can pick up lunch, and then, yeah, and so you're, we won't have anything after this. So, all right, let's go ahead. And Ms. Mosley, I'll turn it over to you for building and grounds.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Um, obviously, I don't have a lot to say about this. I don't know if Dr. Royster has anything. We are at agenda item, I'm sorry, uh, four point oh one, facilities project report. Dr. Royster, if you have anything to say, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Colonel Carlin.
No, we, we have no, uh, we don't have any formal presentation there, but Colonel Carlin, I'll be glad to answer any question, yeah.
Okay. Um, are there any questions, Chuck? Mr. Sellers?
Dr. Royster, uh, Colonel Carlin, either one of you, what's the latest on the traffic and property-related issues connected to the mil, to the elementary school that's going on, the old man property? We, we believe that we have made some reasonably significant progress to reducing the required road improvements. We will know for certain after January the sixteenth, Colonel?
We've got a meeting with the city on the twenty-eighth, sir.
The twen, the twenty-eighth, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the eighteenth, the eighteenth.
Okay. So we need to go back to all the players with our new, what we believe will be accepted as a revised, reduced, uh, mitigation of traffic outside of the property. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Ms. Lavine as well? Did you have a question? Sorry.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer the, that compliment, although we very much appreciate it, to Kathleen Powell, who was our resident architect, Jason Franklin, who handles all our flooring in the district under maintenance operations. And, uh, the leadership of that really was Dr. Ward, uh, through the process. I've popped in occasionally to see how, how things are going on, but it's been a superb team effort.
As a side note, they're complete, all of the upstairs with paint and carpet. They're working right below us now. So maybe by the beginning of next week, we'll have all but the last quarter of the building done.
Thank you so much. Ms. Goodwin-Cowall?
Um, I've been having questions about, um, the south side demolition of the gym.
Yes, ma'am.
About what's gonna go there now.
There's nothing currently planned for that location. At each location, when we, as we conclude our demolition, uh, the contractor will be grading the, the area out and grassing it. But there are no, there are no current requirements for that, that site, where the south side gym was. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Doolan.
It's not on this current plan, but can anybody remind me when construction might begin for the new Bryson out at Fountainhead?
You look that up, Scott. I, I want to say that's like twenty-six or eight, something like that.
We are currently, the current occupancy, Dr. Royster, in the current plan is August thirty-three.
Which would mean a start of thirty, right? Twenty-nine or thirty. And the reason he says the current plan, we bring you the long-range facility plan, tentatively scheduled now, I think for April. We have a date, Nancy. Okay. Uh, the very first of April. Um, we're likely gonna recommend accelerating those projects. So that one will, could likely be moved forward.
So, so construction woods, without it moving forward, construction will start in twenty-thirty? Twenty-thirty. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Doolan. Any other questions? All right, Ms. Bush?
Thank you very much. Um, I will.
Motion to adjourn.
Boy, that was, that was fast. I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We stand adjourned.